I have five o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this call this meeting to order the regular scheduled monthly meeting in the Hartford City Council. And we'll all go for a prayer. Father, again, we come to you today thanking you for another beautiful day, but also, Father, thanking you for revealing your love to us, and pray, Father, for your guidance as we carry our meeting tonight, and just pray that what's sitting down would honor you, but also be of greatest benefit to the citizens of Hartford. So we ask for your guidance, and we ask, Father, that you'll bless our time together, pray these things in your name, amen. All right, now, see, do our visitors wish to speak to us tonight?
No, sir, I'm just here as a concerned citizen.
Okay, thank you, sir.
What's your concern, though?
Huh?
What's his concern, though?
I got a feeling it'll pop up whenever the appropriate time comes. All right, you have your copies of your minutes of our previous meetings. Want to be sure to take a look at those and see if there's any corrections, checks, additions, deletions that need to be made.
You know that park we're kneeling in that moved that camping trailer? There's two more of ours from Rock going distance from us.
Yeah, that's Nancy Crease. Has the one at Neil's moved at all? Has the one at Neil's moved? They were gonna put in, move it around back behind the church, I think, but he had to wait till they installed like a 30 amp feed to the trailer. I don't believe the people are staying in it, I believe they're staying over in the Activities Building, which is not legal either, so.
Yeah.
I don't know where they're staying either. You know, it really don't matter to me, but it's like said, there're two more of us right there, Rock going distance.
We've just got several in town that the planning zone doesn't have any kind of teeth in their ordinances, I mean, they don't have any...
Well, they're looking to redo, and that's part of the revamp thing to have that in there.
Amen, listen, we've got people to follow through, and police will get involved, it's not gonna do any good.
Well, when they redo it, right now, they passed an ordinance that the penalty section is just kind of one paragraph, so I think they're gonna have to flesh it out a little bit.
All right, I entertain a motion to adopt the minutes if there's no changes or additions.
I might promote that we adopt them.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, put the hand, thank you. What about the council meeting minutes of February 28th?
Do what?
I have two sets of minutes. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I looked at this one, and looked over at that one. I didn't realize they're same date, okay.
Maybe most we'd do both pages.
Yeah. It's been a long day, folks, I've come here to tell you, real long.
If you had signed it, you would probably know.
I keep saying to y'all, okay. All right, Mrs. Tare, what have you got for us tonight?
I've got a lot, I want to work with you, you'd like to go in?
Yes.
All right. Is it on here, we can wait till it, do you want me to go ahead and start with the resolution?
The annexation resolution, I don't think it's on there, it was something we were gonna have to add.
Okay. All right, so, to catch you all up to speed, over six years ago, the city police came to a meeting and asked the city to annex in the interchange in portions of what was in the natural parkway, to do some drug interdiction. And to do so, they, we had to do a survey and work through the Department of Transportation, but we did an annexation ordinance, and the survey at the time used the original city boundaries as shown by our old annexation rules as up to that point. Well, at some point after we pass that, it gets up to the land office in Frankfurt, and they map it, and there shows a gap, like a small little gap between the city limits and what was annexed in. And after quite a bit of investigation, we determined that in 1981, the Transportation Department came down to a city council meeting, laid out a map, and said, Hartford, these are your boundaries, and Hartford said, yes, and they signed off on it and sent it up there. Well, for some reason, Transportation used their own survey and didn't bother to use our survey boundaries from our annexations, which is why we have that small gap. It has taken over six years to get a survey and to get something that Frankfurt will accept to fix this issue, but I think we've finally got it fixed up to where we can do this, we don't have to do an ordinance, we can do a resolution, because we're not annexing any new property, we're just correcting a boundary statement that was improperly noted. So, do you have your big map that you wanted to show off?
A lot of maps.
I do. You want a copy for everyone, real quick?
Now, once we get that natural interchange going, do we take turns standing there and kick toes as people can go by? For the Hartford, for the Hartford fund?
You start the sign up list, and then see how many...
This belongs, this is Hartford's exit.
Isn't that right?
Literally.
You have to pay to use.
To get, to leave. Ten cents to get in, a hundred dollars to get out.
That always irritated me, that when I lived in Frankfurt, I came down west Kentucky, it cost me a dime to get here, so I'd go on the big drum, drum all the way to here. Irritated me to the point.
All right.
That's it, the new map.
So this, with all these arrows pointing to it, this little gap right here, that is the area that was omitted because of the filing.
Lot of trouble for that little piece.
Yes, it has been, incredible amounts.
Nineteen, over nineteen acres.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
All up and down the strip there.
Well, yeah.
So that's what this resolution is, it is essentially all we're doing is correcting that original 1981 filing to conform with our ordinances and include the omitted portion. So, we can pass this around, you all can read it, it's like, or somebody wants to read it, but you just need, somebody needs a first reading, and then somebody needs to make a motion to vote on it, so. We all wanna...
You wanna read this?
You want me to read it too, you don't?
Not the whole one.
I'm waiting for the movie.
I just like those little clips.
Six years in the making, and that's all.
That's right, that's right, a hundred billion dollars.
Well, thank goodness, that one's over and done, yes.
Took six years, wasn't much money was spent.
More than you want to, yeah.
For nineteen acres.
I tried to fix it a long time ago, and I wanted to cut that, a lot of kickback on it.
Well, I think a lot of it was just people weren't willing to accept the other side of the story. Mr. Biebersnap knew what he'd surveyed.
To put it in perspective, and why it took so long, the original answer from Frankfurt was that our survey, that we surveyed the entire acre in 1976, that was annexed in by ordinance. And I said, no.
Eric, you wanna read it? You wanna read it? Tell us what's in it.
If nobody read it, all right, I see the warehouses are all in place, but in the bear horse.
The top portion there, in the end, if you want to read that as a header, it can be read, and then you all can vote if you'd like, make a motion.
You want me to read it out loud? A resolution correcting an original KRS 81.045 filing and adopting a modern legal description of omitted territory previously annexed by ordinance. That's the top.
Is there a second?
Um, uh-huh, well, I'll see. Who made the first?
Okay, he just read it, that's right.
Okay, I make the motion, we adopt the resolution.
Okay, second, all right. Discussion regarding the...
Now, we'll get you, you said we had to pay for it.
And I certainly am not gonna try and guarantee that this will fix everything, because every time we've sent them anything, they'd like to kick it back to us, but I did personally call up there, and she seems to think everything's in order at this point, so.
Awesome. Persistence.
I'm gonna call for a vote.
Okay, I'm just watching. Everybody, do a discussion, all in favor, thank you, motion carried.
All right. That one is on here, so the next thing I'm gonna bring up is we were contacted by Charter Spectrum regarding a franchise agreement for cable television services here in the city. And Lisa and I had searched and searched and never could find an original agreement, didn't think there was one, so a lot of back and forth trying to figure out what we needed to do regarding bidding and everything else. Well, eventually, he did get back with us, and apparently there was one dating back to 1987, I think was the original, there was a, in the nineties, there was an extension, but everything expired in 2017, so now you are looking at doing a new franchise agreement. This is pretty common, this is the same thing you could do for your gas and electric and all that. The interesting thing at this particular point is back around 2005 or so, there was a telecom tax that was passed regarding cable television, okay? And at the time, you could only collect the telecom tax on these particular entities, and there's no franchise fees like you would see on your electric bills. Well, a few years ago, there was a Supreme Court case here in Kentucky that ordered that actually you can collect a franchise fee on these cable companies. And after some back and forth, I think right now, what they're at least accepting is semi-settled law, is that you can do one of two things, you can either collect the telecom tax, or you can collect the franchise fee. So I asked Mr. Yuselis, our representative with Charter, to give me some idea, and based on last year's revenues, our telecom tax, our recovery on that was about ninety-seven, ninety-eight hundred dollars for the, yeah, nine thousand, nine thousand eight hundred dollars roughly for the entire year. When he ran the numbers under the franchise fee, it was gonna up it to just shy of eighteen thousand, so it was almost gonna double the revenue.
So that gets paid to the city?
Yes. So, my recommendation is that you all would adopt that plan, and if for any reason another competitor service comes into the area and the realization from franchise fee actually goes down below what you would otherwise recover from your telecom tax, he says right now they're allowing the cities just to switch back and go back to the tax. The only issue would be, once we do a franchise agreement and once we work out the details, we'd have to give written notice, and it usually takes about ninety days for all the parties to approve and get everything up to writing. But right now, what I've asked is he did supply me with a bid advertisement, we will have to do a bid for request for proposals to accept for the franchise, and then I've actually asked if he would attend our next meeting, that way if you all had any questions specific to that, and we can go ahead and in the interim pass around the agreement that he has proposed with some of my notations on it, that way you all had any questions, you could question him, he would be here to provide answers, because he's a lot more knowledgeable of that particular area than any of the rest of us, so. Any questions on that issue? So, Mayor, I'll leave that up to you, whether or not you all want to go ahead and get a motion to go ahead and bid for the franchise, for the cable television franchise, and if we can get the details, Lisa and you can work out the details and get that in at some point.
Okay, I entertain a motion to advertise for a franchise.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second? All right, pick your pick. Any discussion regarding this?
How many companies will bid on it, just one?
One, yeah, you'll only ever get usually, if we get any others, it'll be a surprise, let's put it that way.
I like to say that, like voting on something that's only one person running.
That's part of the living in a small town, you know, if you were in Louisville, it'd be a different situation or something like that.
It's the same thing for Kindred Street. Yeah, we only ever get one, one...
I think it'd be good if they could have a drop-off and pickup place anywhere in the county somewhere, if your cable box messes up, you gotta go over to Owensboro to trade it in, get another one.
I mean, that might be something when he comes, you could probably bring it up to him and see if that'd be something they're looking at in the future, but this is simply just so, our, the franchise agreement is simply so that they can use our streets and our right of ways in order to lay their lines and access, so.
Yeah, but it would be good if they could throw that in too.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing.
Any more discussion? If you're in favor of advertising for the bids, put the hand, thank you, motion carried.
I'll give you that form, y'all can get that for now. Oh, thank you, this is on the, this is on there, do you want to wait, just when that gets on there? And that's on there too, so I'll wait until you get down to that too.
Okay. All right, then, forward out for old business, first item there is Veolia, I received a phone call from David the other day, and he said after further consideration, they decided that they weren't not going to submit a second bid, or second offer to us regarding taking over the water plant asset management. So that now becomes a closed situation there. All right, the garbage truck, I texted you, we had an issue last week, our old garbage truck just started coming apart on us. The gate, which is the big part at the back that closes in on the garbage, it, a weld broke, this is a factory weld, it broke, and it caused the gate to swing, and fortunately they were able to pull things back together, we did a little welding on that, reinforcing where the weld broke. It broke somewhere else again, there's cracks all over our bed, it's a 2006 model bed, and there's cracks all over it. So we borrowed Beaver Dam's spare truck, the problem there is it requires a CDL driver, we've only got one, that's Jason. So he drove, and we finished the garbage collection last week. But then we got online and found an exact duplicate of the bed that we've got, it's a New Way 2006, it's eleven yard, it keeps us under the CDL, eleven, twelve yard is about the limit for a CDL, and under that, twelve and under, we can, anybody can drive, doesn't have to have a CDL license. So we found one, I deemed it to be an emergency, so I contracted with the place where it was, contacted them, they would sell us the bed, actually, it was sitting on a frame, had rear axle and everything, I thought it was just from the diagram or from the picture, it looked like it was sitting in a yard, and they had it sitting on a frame where they could move it around, but it's still attached to the frame. Well, we contracted with a company over here in Owensboro to go up to Oshkosh, Wisconsin to pick it up, and that was about, she estimated it's gonna be about fifteen hundred dollars, it's a little over six hundred mile trip. And so, anyway, we bought it, brought it down here, it's exactly like the one we've got, it's in good shape, but rather than try and take our old bed, go to all the trouble of taking our old bed off of our chassis and putting this new bed on our chassis, what they've decided is since all that broke was back here at the gate, that we're, it's simple to take it apart, it's just two pins at the top, the hinge pins for it, and then there's two cylinders on each side, and so the hoses that come back to those cylinders from the reservoir, that's all it'll take to swap it over, so what we're gonna do is take the gate off of our, we're gonna use the one we've got as long as we can, when it starts breaking again, then we'll be able to take this gate off and put it on there. That, that bed was ten thousand dollars, and the hauling fee is fifteen hundred dollars. And so, I come to you tonight to ask for confirmation from you that we need to purchase that, and the deal's already done, I'm gonna expose fact, though, okay? But it was an emergency, I felt, and, I mean, we can't pick up garbage in pickup trucks or anything like that, it's just, we're due well to do what we can do, so. Anyway, I would like a motion to spend ten thousand dollars for a garbage truck bed and approximately fifteen hundred dollars for hauling Wisconsin down here.
I make the motion that we go ahead and purchase the bed since we already have it.
I mean, our hopper is still in good shape, but we still, we've got this other one that should the need ever arise, we can use it as well, so we can take parts off the one we've got, cylinders, hoses, valves, you name it, if we swap, if we ever, whenever we do swap the gate part of it, which is the heaviest part of that, of the bed, we still have the usable parts off of our, our old bed, you know, that we can utilize on a new bed. What I'm trying to do is just prolong the life of our garbage truck for a couple of years, anyway.
Probably build up the fund and...
Yes.
Is it a possibility if you, when you do get a new truck, the part that it's a non-CDL truck, does a CDL sized truck, would it be stouter and...
It just holds more, it's not, the construction on it's not even better or anything like that, it just holds...
It's a bigger truck.
It's a bigger truck, that's all it is. It probably, probably would have tandem axles, rear axles instead of single axle, okay? Instead of hauling twelve, eleven, twelve yards, it'll haul twenty yards or something like that. So, I mean, we'd end up making fewer trips down to the landfill, but it'd be heavier going across the scales, you know, so, I mean, the only thing you could save is just the number of trips you would make to the landfill. And does it require CDL driver, and right now, we've only got one.
Yeah, that's having CDL drivers, though, that's not a major problem, is it?
Well, if you got a CDL required truck...
Yeah, I mean, the school board up there, I train drivers that get their CDL, and we have like sixty or seventy people, CDL drivers.
They couldn't go ahead and get it, they just never have had the need to.
I mean, not, not any expense to it, except they have to have a fiscal and stuff like that, which is not a bad idea, okay?
Right.
So we need two or three of them guys to have theirs, don't we?
Well, really, we don't have anything that requires a CDL drive, you know?
In case we did, though, I mean, we just like way you had to, had the other day.
Of course, you had to understand too, that a truck, this CDL truck that's got the tandem axles and all those twenty yards is gonna cost twice what the under-CDL with twelve yard or eleven yard hopper's gonna cost.
I'm just asking about it, could...
Yeah.
If you had one that was, I don't know what the life of garbage truck would be, anyway.
You got a first motion, something?
Pardon?
You have a first motion on two?
Yeah, I do, I've got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
We already started discussing.
Second.
Okay, now, the discussion, I mean, this is a 2006 model that we're driving, so thirteen years is, I think, pretty good for a garbage truck. It's not, it's really not the miles you get on it, it's the hours on the engine and the...
Operating hours.
Funds come from, in that motion, from where?
Pardon?
The funds?
Oh, yeah.
Where, I mean, when you remember that motion?
The, the money for the bed has come out of the sanitation fund, but in that motion, could we put that we're gonna supplement the sanitation fund with funds from the occupational tax to make up for it?
Could we use that, we already got set aside for a new truck, to pay for that?
We don't have anything yet, we've still got one more month to go on that other payment before we start that fund.
Okay.
And it's only four thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, it wouldn't take three months to buy the bed.
Yeah.
It's a wash, but not by your head there, it wouldn't have landed on the flag back there.
I might run it out of here.
Would that be agreeable to take the funds out of the OTF to supplement the, okay, would that be agreeable?
Yes.
Okay, so, the motion now is that we take ten thousand dollars out of sanitation fund, lots of approximately fifteen hundred dollars to pay for hauling, funds to be replaced with money from the occupational tax, okay? Any more discussion?
We could do our changeovers ourselves, or the city maintenance?
Yeah, yeah. All in favor of that? Okay, thank you, motion carried. Okay, water plant, water plant asset management software, all right, we had talked about and looked at various software companies, our water plant employees had to go through their annual check, that's what all the books are sitting over here in the corner, they haven't come back to get them yet, but the Department of Water was here and went through all of her books, checking records and licenses and everything, and she gave me a little information sheet. There is a, there is an organization, a company, I don't know if it's a company, I haven't, I've talked to one lady through emails, they provide technical assistance in asset management, energy efficiency and management, fiscal planning and funding coordination, rate setting, water loss reduction and conservation, resiliency planning, whatever that is, but it, they provide it free, okay?
You vote for free.
It's been a long discussion, guys.
I have a, I have a meeting with her by telephone on April 16th, and she's gonna call and just try to get some information about, there were three areas that they wanted to focus in on, but we choose which three areas, so what I told her was asset management, which is one of the things that we've been focused on, with Veolia, with the software and everything, on water loss reduction and conservation, and then I said the resiliency planning, because the rate setting, we just set rates last October, we can't raise rates right now, the fiscal planning and funding coordination, we can get that through GRAD without any problems there, energy efficiency and management, we get that through the engineers at Water Management, they've told us over and over again how to take care of our efficiency and our energy usage. So those are the three areas, asset management, water loss reduction, and resiliency planning, were the three that I told her we'd focus in on, so. Anyway, if y'all would like to look at this, if you'd like to come and attend the, attend the session with her, it'll be at ten o'clock on April 16th, so, here in the office, you're more than welcome. I want to listen to her before, you know, I can make any kind of a recommendation to you about, about anything like that. All right, Ms. Tare, you want to take care of the alley closure?
I can, last month, Ms. Morris came to the council meeting and asked about closing an alleyway that was never developed off of Thomas Avenue.
Yes.
And it won't surprise you that the old records for the city are very difficult to come by, so it took a little while to hunt up the old, the old city plat, but essentially what we're looking at is the area marked here in Block O, and this is an alleyway, it's a ten foot alleyway that was never actually developed or opened up, and at one time it was reserved there, what we think probably to deliver ice, milk, that sort of thing, between the old lot beds. I've prepared an ordinance that describes the area to be closed, and there are certain findings the city council has to be made, it has to first find that the area, the alleyway to be closed serves no really useful purpose, and it would be in the public interest to close it, and the second thing is you have to identify the abutting landowners and get their consent after you get notice. Well, in this particular case, if we close just that portion, it's about a hundred and ten feet right there, then the only abutting landowners are... then the only abutting landowners are going to be Donnie and Carolyn Refro, and that was who Ms. Morris was here representing that day. Um and I believe they may have came by this afternoon, is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
And signed the consent and they're, my understanding that they're in good standing with the city?
They are in good standing.
Okay, so what we have now is uh, we have an ordinance for the council to consider, and if y'all would like to close that portion, there's gonna be a first reading, and after a second reading, it can be published. So here's the ordinance, if everyone wants to read it, if they have a reading.
All right, where do I start?
You just do the heading.
Just the heading?
Yeah.
You can dramatize it too.
With the, with the title, City of Hartford, Kentucky, ordinance number two zero one nine zero one. An ordinance to close a portion of an unnamed alley located south of Taylor Avenue in block O of the East Hartford addition.
Okay, that's it. And we'll have a second reading next month, and unless we have a special call, maybe for some other reason, and at that time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt that ordinance.
I'll just kinda give you a hint, whenever y'all close any roads or alleyways or rides away or something in the city, it is, has to be ordinance, it will have to be published, and then actually, a copy gets um recorded with the county clerk's office. So by law, I know there's been some confusion in the past, um by law, when you close something of that nature, then usually through the middle, it goes one side to the abutting landowner over here, and the other side will go to that abutting landowner. So it's not really a deed from the city to anyone, it's just a matter of operation by law, it disperses like that, so. Um that's all I have on that one.
All right. Uh we're, uh let's see, I want to address, just for informational purposes, about the concrete cuttings. They have done some of the work, I'm not satisfied they've done it all, and I haven't contacted, I keep waiting to see if they're gonna come back. But they have uh cut down trip hazards along Main Street on the east side, uh Center Street, behind the courthouse here on Apple Alley, the sidewalk that we own. And then they've gone in front of the library all the way down to uh the get-go down there. And they've sawed down, and they look, they're good. There's still some areas over here on Center Street that they're gonna have to come back and do that we've contracted for, and they've not completed, so. I haven't talked to Jessica yet, but. Uh regarding the, we talked about purchasing a pump at the water plant. We're having second thoughts about the one that I brought to you, primarily because it's a gas engine. Um we're looking into getting one with a diesel engine that will be, well, the the gas engine was twenty-three horsepower. The one that we've been looking at for diesel engines is fifty horsepower. And uh that's what we, we've got diesel now, uh the one that we have. And so we're looking at trying to see if this one meets our needs. Uh of course, being a diesel, being a bigger engine and everything, it's gonna be a little bit more, so. I haven't got uh any recommendation to bring to you regarding that, but we just felt like the other one, the other one just had a one point six gallon fuel tank. So somebody's gonna stand down there, we're gonna have to modify it and put a bigger tank on, that's what we're gonna have to do, and then uh, anyway. Uh the sewer flow meter, we had talked about purchasing a magnetic uh meter. Uh in talking with engineers, they say that that's not the best meter to use, because that meter only reads accurately if your pipe remains full constantly, and sewer pipe won't do that. So he said uh the best thing to put in there would be what they call a flume meter, which is just basically a box. You get your sewage coming into the concrete box. Uh it narrows down, they measure the flow with an electronic uh device, and it goes back out of the box. Uh that's, we're still working on that one, so I don't have a recommendation to bring to you regarding that, but uh he thought it might be somewhere in the twenty thousand dollar range installed, you know. Uh what that will do is that will allow us to know exactly what we're sending to the plant. And if they have a larger reading, then it will be because of leakage in their lines from, from that meter on down, which includes their pump.
Yeah.
Um.
Wouldn't take long for it to pay for it.
No, not at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, not at all. And what it would do is pretty much put the pressure on them to take care of their lines and, and their the, we feel like there may possibly be some leakage in the uh, in the sewer pump wet itself, you know. And so we're trying to eliminate any, anything that we don't need to be paying for, is what we're doing.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to catch up on that. All right, let's take a look at the uh new business then. Uh the Reach Alert, we were approached by a uh, a gentleman who offered, and I think Dean, uh Dean had looked into this before. Uh what what this is, is a alert system for the citizens of Hartford, okay? We would be able to send out messages either through text, through voice, through uh you've got, you've got a brochure in your packet at the back, that was, they've copied that for you. It's the first one after the treasures report, and we haven't done our treasure report yet. Is that off the thing?
We got one.
I skipped over it after Tara, she got me started on the building. Anyway, you see the Reach Alert brochure there. Uh we can send an alert to uh the whole city. We can send an alert to certain streets, like if we had a water line break on a street, that we can send an alert to the citizens along that street, just telling them we've had a water line break, there is no boil, uh there is no boil water advisory with this break, or we could tell them, there's a boil water advisory, you know, till further notice. Uh we can send it to individual households, uh we could say, I paid your water bill this month, you know. You know, and that would save uh, that would save Sarah from having to call, you know.
And earlier late trash pickups.
Yeah. It would be a means of just communicating with the citizens, you know, that we don't have right now. Um it, they base it upon the number of households in your city, we have approximately eleven hundred households. And it's usually, they would charge about two dollars per household for a year, okay? So it's twenty-two hundred dollars for a year. They say since we belong to KLC, that the first year, they would cut that in half. It would be eleven hundred dollars for the first year uh to implement this, this program here. Being able to notify people in Hartford about anything, so.
Do they manage this system?
Yeah, they do.
How are they gonna do it? Where are they?
Uh I don't know where they're out of, but what we would do is, we would note, we would send them a short message. Like uh, you know, to the uh, to the residents of uh Walker Street. The water line break at such and such Walker Street uh does, does not require a boil water advisory or uh, you know, to uh individuals, we could tell, we'd have sent them a list of individuals to remind them that today is the uh, the ninth of the month, and uh penalties, penalties go on uh your water bill after tomorrow, or something like that, or we could remind people that the day is the twenty-third, tomorrow's the last day to pay uh water bills before, you know, uh they will be shut off, or something like that. We could individualize it, you could have small groups, you could have large groups, you could have the whole city, you know. But we would send them a message, and they in turn would uh send it to the designated recipients. We could do it by, they would do it by text, they would do it by voice, and they would do it by email.
Just curious, if, I'm just curious, because I.
You make him mad.
I don't like those things that sting now. I know like City of Hodgenville for like their notices regarding water line breaks, they just use like the city website and city Facebook page. What, what's the price difference?
Um, what do you mean, price difference?
Well, I mean, like those would be free, I'm just curious, like what, what you're looking at on price.
Well, how many people, my thing is, how many people would utilize uh email or something like that? We've got some over kisses that don't.
That's right.
No computer, but they can be notified by phone, or they can be.
But a lot of them don't have entry machines too, so what happens then?
Well, if they got, if they've got a cellphone, there would be a text on that cellphone, a text notice.
The school system uses that same type system, if they got early dismissal or no school that day, it calls every.
How much is?
Twenty-two hundred a year.
I, I just can't see how it would lessen anybody's work here. I mean, somebody's gonna have to contact them every time something happens. And if, if for instance, and please, we ever have another ice storm or
Right.
A major flood, and how many people are gonna be without things, utilities, including phone service, why you do that?
Well, it'd be just like everything else, it'd be.
Be running it down the streets.
I just bring it to you for, you know, you're concerned, right, I'm not recommended doing, I'm not recommending not doing it, so.
Well, it sounds like a good idea.
I don't get anything out of them, send it to you.
Would that be taxed on your water bill, or would that be taxed on your water bill?
It would, it's be, no, well, no, it would, I mean, it's two dollars a year. You would, you know, probably, we'd just take it out of general fund, twenty-two hundred dollars is all it is.
I mean, all the people don't have to pay it.
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, how are you gonna get everybody's phone numbers?
You don't.
We don't have everybody's phone numbers now, but, you know.
I mean, as a citizen, I'm just gonna tell you, I don't give my phone number to more people than I have to. I don't want you calling me.
Well, if you didn't want it, you wouldn't have to have it.
No, you don't have to be notified. They would charge us according to the number of households, they said we've got approximately eleven hundred households.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we have eleven hundred households, I think that's.
Water count, water meter.
That's what our accounts, but you know, that concludes businesses and schools and churches and everything else. So it'd probably be less than that.
Yeah.
But y'all want two hundred a month, or?
Yeah.
Just one.
How would we go about giving them their phone numbers?
Well, I'd say water bills would be the best way, you know, that we put a notice on there. Or we put, put something in the paper, of course, everybody doesn't take the paper either.
Not anymore.
No.
But they're gonna charge you twenty-two hundred dollars a year, even if you only get fifty phone numbers?
It's two dollars, no, it'd be two dollars per household, is what I think what that charges.
It don't matter to me.
To me either.
You wanna think about a five a month?
I think it'd be a good one.
Drive in my chair.
They don't have key on it, their water line still be broke when it breaks, so they just won't know about it.
It's a, it's just a one-year contract, it's not a long-term contract, and after every year, if you decide you don't want anymore, cancel it. Uh what they reduce type of single message and send it to be a text, voice, or an email, and go, could go to the entire city. To specific streets, to individual addresses, could go however you designate it. Of course, you'd have to tell them, like, these are addresses that we would want to send it to, or something like that.
Well, pick up truck, you sit in it with the speakers saying, you have no water, you have no water.
Moving right along, what's, what's your, you wish, make any kind of a move on this, or?
Well, we've tried for years.
Maybe eleven hundred dollars.
I, I don't know, I think there's other means of getting information out there, and if people choose to want it, then they can get it, like you could put stuff on Facebook and people can sign up for notifications. And it's really nothing, like, sometimes people just don't want to be contacted. Yeah, well, and I, I mean, you may not want a text either.
Stalker, yeah, I got like twenty-five likes from you one night.
I did?
This older generation.
What'd you do?
Use Facebook.
The younger generation doesn't either.
No, that's true. Actually, I'd give it a try for a year, I don't.
Okay.
We wouldn't be considered a teller, marketer, or nothing like that.
I will say, there's, there are other companies out there that do the exact same thing, I don't know what they.
These, these were the ones that approached us, so I told them I'd bring it to the council, let y'all decide.
What about the phone side? Cause like, I've got my phone set to shut down to where that I won't get notifications unless it was like Amber Alerts. Yeah, I mean, you can do that through Apple, I don't know about. But then, if they had my number, I wouldn't get it, right? I mean, as far as Apple, I don't know about Samsung.
Well, I mean, you can block things, but like Shogun texts me every other day about a lunch special.
Okay. Do you wish to make a motion, or are you just gonna let it die?
I'll let it die, I mean.
Okay. All right. The uh next item that we have there is a EDC member, I'd like to recommend that uh Glenn Thompson be appointed to the Economic Development Committee as a uh business mem- uh member to that organization or to that committee. Is there a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to.
Okay, you know who, everybody know who Glenn Thompson is? He and his wife are the ones that opened up the Cop Cafe. Okay.
I'm accepting that motion, yeah.
All right. Any discussion regarding that? All in favor? Okay, thank you. They're very energetic and enthused about trying to broaden their footprint in, in Hartford, so. All right, um that brings us up to the ordinance regarding the licensing of golf carts and UTVs on on Hartford streets.
I'll kinda touch base with that, last month, y'all had mentioned something about sticker permits and daytime operation versus nighttime operation, licensed drivers and everything, and I don't know if you all were able to get copies and review those ordinances, but all that's already in there. I mean, it's just a matter of enforcement. The only real thing, I think, that was brought up last month that may need some more clarification is um the time for the renewal of the permit. And um we can do that, but before I prepared anything, since it does cost money to publish and create an ordinance, I thought maybe if you all had reviewed everything, just tell me what changes you would like, and we'd try and do it all at once.
The, so there is already a sticker for it?
It's all in the ordinance, now whether or not it's ever been enforced or actually done, uh.
Where are you getting it? Do you have the ordinance?
Yeah. What the police department would like to do is have just a colored sticker this year. From, we would start July one to June thirtieth.
Just like license on your boat.
It is, it is, exactly, but that way that if they encounter a golf cart, they can see whether it's licensed or not.
They don't really care whether they're licensed drivers or not?
Well, as required under the ordinance is that you have to have a ballot on it.
But they have to be able to catch people, you know, that's part of it.
Well, if they'd get out and patrol the streets, they'd catch them, let me tell you.
When we talked about last time, it wasn't two days, I was going up Smith Street. It was when school let out, and a boy looked like he might've been middle school age, driving a golf cart. And his brother in there looked like he might've been three years old.
But one, for one year, we'd have one color of sticker, and next year, we'd have a different color sticker, and maybe after.
So we had, do we have a sticker?
We don't have them yet, no.
That's what I was, I mean, it's in here.
We estimate possible, we did probably shop near around two dollars, probably, I mean, that's just a ballpark.
Right, cause I, I've never seen one, I know we talked about having the permit. Right, cause I've, I've never seen one, I know we talked about having the permit.
I think you have one permitted cart in the city right now, is that?
Yeah.
Are you kidding me?
No. That's why we need something to.
Yeah, you need to, there is the sticker that's on here, we just.
The police don't know who's.
Right, cause you can't just pull them over to ask them for their permit, because that would be not legal. But if they don't have a sticker displayed, I mean, we didn't tell them where to display the sticker. We just said, display the sticker.
I mean, like I said, there's certain changes, a lot of that came straight out of the statute, which, because the, we can make it more restrictive, we just can't make it less restrictive than the KRS.
They're pretty strict over there down there.
We oughta be here. Anyway you go in Hartford, you're gonna cross a US highway. And that's against the law to have them on that.
Well, you can, you can cross it.
At a ninety degree, yeah.
You know.
Drive a Seabrook and down sixty-nine.
I don't even like getting on Clay Street, you get killed, huh?
Yeah, that's right, that's a truth.
Anywhere that there's a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, like Clay Street, Union Street, Main Street, they're allowed to cross it as the most direct route, but not to be on it, you know.
Oakwood Drive on Saturday.
Must have been our imaginations.
Do what?
Oakwood Drive, you think it's a drag strip, especially in the twenty mile an hour speed zone.
Yeah, yeah.
Should blitz on our mountains. They're everywhere.
Oh, yeah, I want to ride that one.
I understand, some of them are.
They're everywhere, all over the place.
Yeah, some of them are suited up where they run a little faster than a normal golf cart will, so I see the policeman with a radar gun on golf carts.
Well, get over here.
Okay.
You all tell me what changes you'd like to see, and I'm happy to draft something, I just, most of those things you had mentioned, I knew were already in there, so I.
Well, yeah, it wasn't clear about if there was a sticker that was, the major discussion didn't do us any good to have a permit without some sort of identifier that we could.
Right.
Pull up with a car, or the cart, or not.
But yeah, like I said, I think they only ever had one applicant, so I'm not quite sure it was ever.
Right, where'd he put his? Maybe he could be the standard.
They're laying on a dresser, I guess.
Wouldn't doubt it.
Cause it says, display it.
That's what, what they did, it was, when they created permits, it's a half sheet. And then they, most people that, we only have, some are, we have one right now that's not expired, just technically the way that it is. We've issued many more than that, but what they did was they would take the one and then they would put it in a plastic sleeve and all, they kept it on the golf cart. No, there was no display of anything like that.
The difference between displaying and having is again, probable cause.
But at that time, I don't know, we probably in total had fifteen or twenty, but no one has renewed the point.
I guess if we're gonna have something like that, and we have an ordinance for it that we've already developed.
That's what helps Hartford better.
Right, what do we want to do about it, as far as have it, do away with it, or clarify it and enforce it?
I'd say that if we need to clarify about a sticker and make them put it.
Where we, yeah.
Yeah, where you want it, right in the middle of the windshield, or, you know, whatever.
You know, some, yeah, visible. Display it in a practical visual.
Right.
And it doesn't say that, it just says, display, so I, that would be just amending the, the verbiage of it, basically.
Is there penalty written into that ordinance?
There is.
I think so, I think it's a fine.
Fifty dollars for the first, and then a hundred dollars for subsequent, and that's just the fine.
We confiscate then.
You're gonna arrest kids?
Well, they gotta have a license.
Yeah, they do.
And, and insurance.
Yes, supposed to be insured as well.
And so, they're not gonna go to duty for it, but their parents can.
Personally, personally, one of the bigger things that I've had concerns with are the children that operate through the city limits, and also at night, I've seen several that are.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, when, insurance, do you have to have insurance separate from your automobile?
It probably is covered under homeowner's.
Requirement for insurance, so that's, that's on the ordinance sites, the requirement for, so there, I'm sure there'd be a minimum liability.
I had a golf cart out the country one time, and some vandals got a hold of them, a bunch of them, they just used them like bumper cars, you know.
Oh, that was fun.
And found out that it's covered under my homeowner's insurance.
Oh, really?
Most of them are in umbrella policies, they all, they all tend to cover those things.
In fact, this is a three hundred dollar cart, and they offered to buy me a new one for twenty-eight hundred dollars, you know.
Most of the time you're gonna find out if it's insured at an accident. But the sticker is a quick identifier where they paid Hartford their dues, so to speak, cooperated.
If you all have any ideas or whatnot, you wanna get them to me sometime between now and the next meeting, I can work up something. Obviously, you can make a few changes between the first and the second, as long as it's not major, major changes.
Sure.
But I'm happy to work up something, I just, most of everything we discussed was already in there, so.
I didn't, I didn't realize it, cause, but it's in there, we just have to clarify the positioning of the sticker.
Just buy the sticker and stick it on there.
Stick it on, as long as it's visible.
Yeah, probably on the back end somewhere.
Yeah.
Back fender, hopefully on the roadside, centerline side.
Are they required to have a slow-moving triangle like tractors have? I saw one on one golf cart. Beaver Dam quarries, I think.
It does say a slow-moving emblem, and that's in there too.
I wouldn't even look for it.
But I, a lot of them are sold with those golf carts, are they not? Okay, never mind.
Some will put a flag up, you know.
All you fancy people with your golf carts, you know, we buy lawnmowers.
Golf cart drivers.
Oakwood Drive.
That's it.
All right. Moving right along, do you wanna address that sanitation ordinance?
Whatever this.
I can.
References.
George indicated that there's been some other inquiries by citizens who own property within the city, that maybe they don't use it every day, property, but they do have water hookup, and anytime our water accounts have it, our sanitation ordinance requires that you also have a trash collection, unless you've made other arrangements to show a written contract that you made other arrangements, like a dumpster, a commercial pickup. And they've asked to be exempted because they just, they're usually more there during the summer and maybe not the winter. He wanted to bring it up, I will say that when this was passed just a few years ago, this updated sanitation ordinance, the reason was, was our sanitation guys were having a hard time, because when they're out on the truck, they don't know whether or not you have sanitation and you don't, if the trash is out there, they're picking it up. So there were unfortunately quite a few freeloaders to the city. So the ordinance was passed to say, basically, if you have a business or you have a residence or anything in the city of Hartford and you have water, you also have a trash pickup bill. But he wanted to put that on there for y'all's discussion tonight.
Put a sticker on their trash can.
They just asked it for you to consider if they could be labeled as exempt from that. They're there very seldom, and they don't bring any trash out, you know, I mean, whenever they leave, they take their trash with them.
It is just one place in the city that's doing that?
You've had several people.
If you let one, you have to let others, you know, we've had requests from others that they take their own, their trash home and burn it themselves, you know, they don't live here. They live out in the country, and they've requested, I take my, all my trash is paper, I just take my trash out to the country and burn it, so why? You know, why should I pay, so you end up with all these special cases.
Well, if they're paying for trash pickup, they won't have to.
Well, they're, they're.
They're doing that if they're already paying.
What they're saying is, the paper that I have, even though it's shredded, is highly confidential, or. And they don't like the possibility somebody may go through their trash or something like that.
Right.
Give me a break.
Open up that door.
Give me a break.
That's the problem, is once you open the door, it's, everybody can.
It's gonna be, yes.
And as small as you all are, enforcement is, an all or nothing issue is gonna be the easier, what the department says.
I'd say we maintain what we've got, mostly, I think.
Plus, we'd have to develop a penalty for trash abuse.
Well.
If they put it out and they said they. There'd be a million dollar fine.
Failure to let us know.
We have, we have citizens who put out an abnormally large amount of trash for a three-person, four-person family.
Right.
Which I'm sure what it is, is Ken folks are bringing their trash into the city for us to pick up and haul off.
Right.
So that they don't have to take it to the dump and pay for it, you know.
Why didn't everybody get them a burn barrel? I mean.
Not the city.
No.
I burn, I burn stuff in my little burn, my little fire pit, or whatever you wanna call it.
In October?
We won't take them now.
Yes, yes, in October, cause I'm not near a wooded area, so the burn policy doesn't apply.
Plus, we've had so much rain.
Yeah.
And they didn't clean up around their house, cause it's misty around.
Yeah, there's some of the people, I think, that are hauling or bringing families' trash in from other places to.
What about, what about the residents in town that don't have water, but yet, how, how are they distinguishing between that? I mean, if they occupy residence in the city.
Like non-payment? Like for citizens that haven't paid and are not current with their water?
Yeah.
Each week a list is given out to the sanitation department, and they know not to pick up the trash if they haven't paid for the water bill, we don't pick up their trash.
It's not, it's not a perfect method.
Yeah. They just take it next door and drop it by their neighbor?
Usually the.
Yeah.
There's a lot of ways around Hartford's rules and regulations and techniques and.
And why is that? Because we don't enforce them.
Well, we had one fellow that for five years got free water, or he thought it was free, free water, trash, and sure, but he found out differently once it was discovered. Moving right along, so I understand that we're gonna leave it like it is.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, the next item of business that we have for consideration is water customer payments. It's been difficult for our collectors up front, because past administrations have done different things. And the citizens years ago may have gotten, you know, one, they may have gotten to roll over a certain amount to the next month, or they may have gotten to pay a day late or something like that. And different administrations have done it different ways, and I'm not saying one's better than the other one. What I've tried to do is adhere to the ordinances. And I tell the girls up front, you tell the people that, you know, if they ask you to do something different, they're asking you to break the law.
Fair enough.
They lose their job door, but we always have those people who would like late fees. They don't pay by the tenth, they come in on the eleventh and put money into the night deposit box on the eleventh. It's a day late, but they pay like it was the tenth. And so, they're not paying the, the late fee assessment, so.
Can we not automatically add it to the next bill?
Well, that's what, that's what the question is. If that happens, is that because our ordinance doesn't allow us to? And I can tell. I don't like to do, like say it like that, I can tell them that they can just go ahead and roll it over to the next month, you know, or if it's three dollars late, or something like that, if it's five dollars late. Well, what's the limit?
Yeah, yeah.
If it's twenty dollars late, do you roll it over if it's a, if it's a hundred dollar bill and they pay one dollar, do you roll the ninety-nine over, you know, stuff like that?
No.
Well, where, where's, where does it stop, you know, where does, what's the limit on those things?
And, and George, you might kind of catch up some of them, because I know you and Mary Bill have been on here before, and several years' experience, but a lot of this was redone because at one particular time, way back when, your water bill maybe would only come out quarterly, so you would get three months, and it would be one bill after three months, and then they would do it, but your shut-off fee, it might be a full month again, and some people abscond, so you'd never find them, so they found that this was the best way to at least try and stay current and have enough water income coming in, and catching the people who maybe late or maybe non-payment. But as you've had, I know unfortunately you all are public figures now, so I'm sure you've been attacked and called, and, and you've had visitors. You know, the issue becomes, what can you do to still be able to maintain your current operations and keep your bills coming in and keeping them paid, and still have your disconnect go out, but at the same time, try and be fair to your customers?
To the majority of the customers.
I think the only thing, when I went through the ordinance, the only thing that I was considering was the, I mean, a lot of it makes sense, the only thing is the fee. What do you do with the fee? Like, do you tag the fee onto the next bill? Because the notification of, hey, I didn't realize I was late, or I had somebody else drop it off, I mean, that's still their responsibility.
That's right.
It's the same people over and over every month, okay? And if they're, if they're charged a hundred dollar fee, it's because this is not the first time. The first time that a person, and, and some of them come in thinking, well, is if I pay by the twenty-fifth? No, on the back of the bill, it says, you paid before the twenty-fifth.
Sure.
The twenty-fourth is last, you're giving them two weeks. Okay, the contract that we have with them says, we supply you with water, you pay us by the tenth of the month, okay? If you don't pay us by the tenth of the month, we'll say, all right, we'll give you two weeks that we'll tack on a ten percent penalty, okay? If you haven't paid us in two weeks after that bill was first due, we're thinking, you're not gonna pay us. And so on the twenty-fifth, then we're cutting your water off, okay? The first time we cut it off, it's a fifty dollar fee. The next time that it happens within a three-year period, it's a hundred dollar fee. Now, if you go three years without having late fees, then it's back to fifty dollars again, okay? And this happens to, to good people, honest people, people that are good citizens, people who didn't get their bill, had never thought anything about it, you know, and the tenth came and went, and they, you know, the, paying the water bill never crossed their mind, you know. We offer ACH, we let, we'll just automatically draw from your bank account. But the people who come in here on the twenty-fifth, the twenty-sixth, and, and they want to complain because they owe a hundred and fifty dollar bill, and they wanna pay a hundred and forty, and let that ride, because we're the city, we're supposed to take care of our people, you know. That's some of the attitude is, you know, that we, we're supposed to, you know, be benevolent to our citizens. I have compassion for them, but I have rules that I have to follow too, that you all have aside for us.
Probably the same people all the time, do they? Probably the same people.
It is, it is, it's, you know, someone might like to look at them and say, how would you like for me to give you twelve hundred dollars a year?
I knew it was gonna come after me.
I'm sure they would take that. All I would tell them is, we'll pay your water bill on time, you know, and that way you'll have the extra hundred dollars, you know, every month.
There's one other thing, one of the reasons that we also come up with this, probably was for lack of non-payment, was at that time, too, we did not accept credit cards as payment, which now is another form of payment for water bill, we do charge four dollars to use that credit card. The other thing that you might not know.
But the four dollars doesn't even cover our cost there.
No, I bet it didn't.
And the other thing you might not understand is from an accounting standpoint, and this is coming straight from our financial auditors, is water, sewer, and sanitation are what's called, from an accounting standpoint, is enterprise funds. The city is. The city is putting costs into making product. That's not true for property taxes. Don't cost the city anything for the property to sit there. So as far as collection, it's a total different animal. You don't have the choice for water as far as selecting, because the city is, it is an enterprise fund and you are required to put costs into it continually to make the product. So I just want you to understand the.
Yeah.
The diff, the difference.
Well, you call people that are late anyway.
They, they try. We don't always have a number for people. People sometimes don't have mailboxes set up. Uh, there's a lot of different, uh, thing, but Sarah tries to call people at, you know, especially around the 24th, 25th and let them know, hey, you know, cutoff day is here.
I gotta call the next day I set up automatic.
We had a gentleman in here that had automatic and his still fell through the cracks.
He paid through his online banking software.
Online, yeah.
That's like going out here, if I was banking at Commonwealth Community, and I have my personal bank account there, I go in there and I use their software and I put my vendor in, City of Hartford, and pay it.
Right.
And that's what my comment last month was, because no one is responsible for that. So if he set his payment up, his date for whatever date, there's another third-party company that CCB coordinates what to do, that billing for that online software, then they will mail that then to the city. We'll get a stack of those every month and they're the kind of little four, little, I mean, three little sides you tear off, checks automatically in there. Those are notoriously late from every bank that exists. There's no one takes responsibility for those late payments. That's why he didn't.
Well, that was his first month that he had set him up, so he, he didn't realize that obviously until afterwards.
And he may, and he may not, I don't know.
And how long had he been paying for water on time? Over three years? See, that seems to be the standard, three years it resets, but if you've got nine years of good, you should have.
But he may have thought he was paying on time and it was.
Sure.
And former administrations, they were just taking it two or three days late.
Right.
You know.
But he had just set his up, according to his statement.
Yeah.
He had just set his up and it didn't work for him.
Did he change his ACHs?
That day, before the meeting that day.
So he wasn't malicious.
No.
He wasn't malicious in, in trying, but we still hit him with the fifty dollars.
Right.
Yes.
Uh, and now, and that's what we need to, to.
Well, his service was turned off.
His service was turned off.
His service was turned off because he was unaware.
And I'll give you, I'll give you a case point. Dad got a call the other night, I was over at their house, and got a call from one of his employees. She had no water.
Yeah.
And she went outside and looked, there's a lock on it.
Yeah.
In terms of, it turned out the next day, she called, she had mailed a check in, for some reason her check got lost in the mail, they tried calling, they couldn't get hold of her and they disconnected it. And she said, she goes, it's my fault, I should've double-checked to make sure the check got there, or I should've made sure the check there to bank.
Ultimately, it always is that, is the.
And we've all had that happen. Yeah, but I mean, I think that's part of the issue that they're saying is.
Might got turned off after nine years of faithful payments and on vacation, neighbors picking up the mail. Just one of those things, nine years. I didn't get a call, I didn't even get a knock on the door. And the guy that was turning it off, I've known him my whole life. So it was a policy issue ordinance, because asking him to do that is by this ordinance, I get all of that. But I didn't get, no, nine years, I still got the fifty dollars, I didn't even argue it, because that's the ordinance.
In prior years, there was been a mayor that was in the shower and they cut his.
Counselor, yeah, counselor, Lynn Lightness, yeah, to Lynn.
And so there are, uh, circumstances that.
Some lathered up.
Where we punish honest, faithful that aren't part of the problem that we've only been talking about here.
Yeah.
We've only been talking about the percentage of problems, but with no, uh, I mean, nobody even called to see if Eric was okay. Nine years you've been making your payment on time, what, falling, you can't get up? Is it, nobody checked on me, didn't any help or comfort or anything? So there's gotta be something between all of us that we can come up to where service isn't altered on an honest mistake on.
We don't know who's honest and not honest though.
Well, let's just punish everybody then. We don't know if you're gonna speed.
Well, they do, they do. They do, and we don't like that.
Well.
With, last week we had, uh, a lady came in, uh, never had a problem before with anything. Uh, I don't know, she didn't get a bill for some reason. I, I, I know there's been times that I've got my bill and my neighbors were stuck to the back of it, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And I have to run it over to their house or something like that. Those, because they're going there in a big, huge stack and it's easily, easily mishandled like that.
Is there.
But she came in and she paid the fifty dollars and she turned right around and got ACHs. She went directly to, automatically draw from her bank account. So she doesn't worry about it anymore.
Why don't they, what, what can we do from a city standpoint just to educate some people on their options? Hey, if you choose to do this, could that be put on the back of the bill just to help?
Put it on the website.
How about a break on their bill if they go to automatic?
Every time somebody comes in to start a new account, they get a piece of paper and say, here.
How much is the deposit?
Uh, if it's rent, if they're renters, it's two hundred, if it's, if they're owners, it's one hundred.
And so can this penalty be taken out of their deposit?
Well, we use the deposit to cover their last month's bill.
Right.
When they move out, so if you use that.
I mean, but you can resupply your deposit, if, if the money's there by, via deposit, they can not have their service turned off, it can be paid out of deposit and then they have to refund their deposit. They're still being penalized.
Yeah.
But they're not being, their water's not being shut off on the first offense.
What's the late fee and penalty?
Does that make sense?
It does, but that deposit is there to pay for a service that they've got.
On the 25th.
You see what I'm saying? Let's just say they stop.
I'm not talking about turnoff, I'm talking about the late.
Right, and I'm not gonna pay anymore. They have a hundred dollar bill.
Okay, so if you receive.
But they have that deposit.
Let's say the bill is due by the 10th.
So to, just keeps them from getting their water turned off.
How much, what's the penalty?
Deposits there to keep your water from being turned off. And then they, they still gotta pay the fine.
If it's a bill, sixty-three. Sixty-three some odd dollars. It's six dollars thirty cents.
It's almost like insurance.
Just so I'm on the page here, if the penalty is ten percent.
I'm just trying to think of ways.
Is there anything wrong with taking that bill? And if you get it in, it's due by the 10th, and it doesn't get here till the 12th, take that ten percent.
You can call me a hard-nosed whatever. We have responsibilities. And we know when those responsibilities must be met and it's our problem.
And then if they don't pay it in full by the next month, everything will all unfold. Shut it off. Is that what you're policing?
I'm sorry.
But that's what I'm saying, but I mean, that's what, that's what I'm hearing kind of is.
If I live here for a hundred years.
Am I vocalizing that?
I didn't, y'all had a hundred dollars that you could've invested in.
My ass is gonna be twenty dollars.
I'm saying.
My mother lived here for ninety-eight years. She didn't get hers back. So now, you know.
So we stole from your mother.
No, no, you didn't. They put her a meter in.
Yeah.
And took care of other problems that happened on the street.
This point's getting, now.
And any number.
If we have a deposit, I understand that it covers for when you leave, anything, I understand that. I'm talking, I'm not talking about getting people out of a fine, not talking about that at all. I'm talking about a first offense, not shutting their water off, still.
We don't shut their water off on the first offense.
Oh, you don't? Mine got shut off first offense?
Well, okay, the fifty dollars is.
That's the.
That's the penalty they're paying, yes. Yeah, we shut off after the 25th, they unpaid, right.
I'm saying, still fine them, keep their water on, and, and you, they have to refund that portion of their deposit at the next bill, by the next bill.
Or what, we shut their water off?
That would be a second offense.
I mean, in theory, you could say, the minute your bill exceeds seventy-five dollars, your water will be turned off, including fees and penalties.
Well, man, we're not at this moment.
A point in time when it hits this threshold, it's gonna, it'll get turned off.
Yeah, instead, you can still have the, the rule, you can still have the penalty, but a first offender shouldn't have their water turned off.
Like it shouldn't ever get through that seventy-five dollar threshold, or whatever that threshold is.
A minimum bill is sixty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents, something like that.
And they're expected to pay their bill every month.
Yeah.
And let's say they do pay it, it's just late, the ten percent late fee.
Is another six dollars and thirty cents on it, so you're up to seventy dollars right now.
But no, there's only a six dollar balance on the account. The minute the balance on the account exceeds a certain threshold is when they go out and turn it off.
Do you hunt?
I don't know how you would police that from a software standpoint.
I don't.
I do know that it's, so you understand that, 'cause I'm the one that do the refund checks every month for the people that are, that are moving. Those checks usually are very small. If anything, because the water bill is always, the water bill usually greater than that.
Yeah.
And then when they leave, then you're just kinda left with that unpaid balance. And that's where we have been working with B, we're down to see, we've never got, actually all the way through that, you have to see if we can communicate between the cities, because we're being left with balances and their deposits isn't paying yet. You know, in their end balance.
Right, I'm, I'm just, I'm not disputing a punitive measure, not disputing it at all. I'm saying for a first time, could be an honest, like Mr. Leach, gentleman, thought he was good to go, wasn't malicious, it was worked out, not, instead of turning his water off, that he does get notified that he didn't pay his water on time. He still gets the penalty for the late.
Say, I don't know that Sarah didn't try to call him.
Well, he said he wasn't at home, he didn't get home at work, or it was six o'clock that time.
And there, and there again, that's only as good as the phone number we have on the phone.
Sure, but I haven't changed my phone number since 2006, you know, and I didn't.
I don't know if you changed your ordinance to say that first, that you waived only a first-time offender. I mean, but you also, I think from a software standpoint, how are you gonna police it? How are you gonna roll that over?
So to that point, Lisa, is there value in understanding, okay, how can we do this from an office perspective and say, hey, these are some options that are maybe there that work within the office, the way it's run? To then say, hey, can we get, how can we run the city and get the ordinance to work together?
Right, and see, until George came on board, we did not make any bone calls to any water customers. Period. Because that does take a lot of, a lot of time, that person could be doing other duties in the city.
In the past, there was a lot of write-offs. At one time, we probably had, what, eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand dollars when I came.
Had eighty thousand dollars in write-offs and late fees and unpaid.
We're not, we're not insinuating any of those things be re-implemented, because you can't do business that way.
Right.
But what we are doing now, since George has came aboard, is Sarah is calling, she does call the numbers on the phone, but she is calling them to let them know between the 10th and the 25th before the cutoff.
I'm saying I didn't get one.
And that doesn't mean that she didn't dial the wrong number, that doesn't mean that she had the right amount of.
I'm sure mine.
When did you get your water cut off?
Yeah.
I mean, 'cause I don't have a home phone anymore.
September of last year, I think.
You barely got here then.
I went to mayor.
That's right.
None of these problems.
Then it must've been October. Because remember, we, I came in here because what, I was home.
I took over at the end of, end of October, at the October meetings when I took over.
You must've just been freshly sworn in, because I came in, I'm like, here's my money, uh, turn my water back on.
That's, that's the funny part, is the people who, who are notoriously late every year, every month, that they're cut off or whatever.
Right.
As soon as they bring that money in there, they want that water turned on right now.
Immediately.
And I'm thinking, I want my money back on the 10th right now too, and I didn't get it.
Yeah.
It's unreal how many churches right here we have in Hartford that pay late or don't pay, and we have shut off.
Thank God it wasn't me.
I mean, and they're paying, if they do pay, they're paying.
I don't know what it is, you know?
I just don't, I just don't think a first time, non, you know, any first timer has to be considered non-malicious.
So anything that's done other than that.
Repeat offenders, not so much.
A human person is wanted or mainly changing.
But, uh.
Just like.
Changing.
Mr. Leach was, was a good example of what we want to avoid.
You manually have to go in and.
Make an adjustment.
We'll always have this, that support.
And those pages, or about five pages.
If we've recognized his faithful payments.
I know what you're saying.
Pools starting to be filled. I mean, I would like to be able to find something that we.
We can still find.
Systematically, if you had, like, kinda like, if it was three dollars.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Then you could get a list of everyone's paid, this is the list of they've paid except for three dollars or four dollars. Our system can't do that.
Mm-hmm, so like, you know, if it's tacking on the fees, then okay, on the 25th, I run the report, here's fifty dollars, if that's my threshold, I'm gonna go turn all these services off, fifty dollars and below. You know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not advocating changing any of the fees, any of the reporting, but just what's the threshold when we send somebody out to go and do that? And if we set that threshold to where a first-time offender may not be impacted, they may. You know, maybe the, it's, their bill was really high and the fee on top of that just pushed it over the threshold, but, you know, you can't fix that, go pay your water bill. You know, they should've done that to start with. So that would be the only thing I would ask, is see, is, is there a, an efficient way to do it from a, a city management perspective first, and then see if that could be, make sense to add to the ordinance?
That's why I put it on the agenda, because I need for you to tell us, because you're the legislative body, we're the administrative body, so we need to know what law, what ramp, what limitations do we have to operate on it, you know? That's why we're here, because, you know, there've been a lot of complaints about it, because we've been sticking with the ordinance, you know?
Yeah.
And so you, you tell us what you want and we'll go by that, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we'll do what, what it is that you want, but we need to know, so.
Right.
So what, uh.
Ordinance, we got pretty well worked up to now.
Well.
Said you got a lot of.
Until the fellow came in.
Well, Mr. Leach and the, a lot of complaint comment doesn't match. So Mr. Leach was an example, but the mayor said there's been a lot of complaints, so that's what we have to address.
But there is a lot of complaints when you do try to collect. You don't have a lot of complaints when you're not working and trying to collect these, you understand that?
Oh, I understand that very well. I'm also saying, is that how we reward faithful people that, that maliciously had a first-time offense, not maliciously? We can still implement all the fees and fines and, and, and everything else that we wanna impose on them without shutting off their service. We can do that. And that's what I propose, that first-time offender doesn't lose their service on their first offense, they still are imposed the fee.
I don't agree with it. When I put my money down, when I built my house.
Not everybody's good as you are.
Move back here, no, no, no. When I put my money down, Earl Thompson, the bills due the 10th of the month, I said, that's fine. And I remembered that.
Well, actually Sarah goes through about a, a good five-minute.
Yeah.
Spill with every customer when they set up an account and explains all of the fees.
Sure.
Uh, we've never done that before, that detail, but she does it with every single person, so they can't come back and say, well, we didn't know that.
The ones that signed up before she explained it can say that.
Like you, maybe back when they actually wasn't even forcing.
Yeah, back in two thousand and nine, was when I moved here.
Yeah, when they did even.
Well, where you lived before, did they not care whether you paid on time or not?
Never missed one, my whole life.
Well.
That's what I'm saying.
So you knew that you had a water bill and you knew that it was due?
No.
Yeah, you did. I mean, if you've always paid one, you knew that you had to pay for it.
I accidentally paid it every month.
Yeah. Well, I had a while back then that kept up with that kind of stuff. But no, uh, there was one slipped through the cracks because unlike my claim of perfection, I, I fall short of that. Uh, but I am a responsible citizen. That pays my bills, that when you step out of line one time, you shouldn't be slapped. We want our law enforcement to not do that to folks. They have a little bit of leeway. They can give a ticket in certain instances and don't give a ticket in the same instance.
Okay, well, we're informed that if we do that, that is called discrimination.
Yes, it is.
Our auditors.
That's why we want, if we, if we control the ordinance. I don't understand what the argument is of, of helping out a responsible citizen that has one goof in their lifetime? Without turning off their utility.
I don't know that they're all responsible citizens to begin with, but, you know, you've got other council members here.
I mean, if that's all we're trying to achieve, is for that first time offender, then if you had a phrase and you change your ordinance to where all first time offenders, but it would have to be every single one, once that ordinance was in place. Every single person, including those repeat offenders.
Just that we've already got, yes.
They would have one free time.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, the hard thing about all of this is trying, is like you said, is to police it. Can we write something where that is doing more that we can police it?
That's, that's what I'm asking.
And that's what we've been doing and that's where the problem is.
Yeah, what's the cost to go out and turn somebody's water off? How much time does it take?
We checked around, I don't know about that piece, but we checked around with other local areas and our, we checked, we had our fees the same as everyone else.
No, not the fees, but what's it, what's it really cost the city to go out and do it?
Depends, uh.
Costs a whole lot more when they come in after hours, you're getting two hours callback time.
Twenty minutes, something like that, probably.
George has one to turn some on, have you?
Yeah, I've, I've got keys and tool in my truck.
If I'd only known that.
Do I?
The one time I was a bad citizen, had to come back on from vacation and mine got shut off and it was a failed.
I've gone out, I've gone out after hours and turned people's water back on.
You know, a lot of retired folks don't even know what day it is.
Actually, it says right here, if you read on this, if it's an after hours holidays or something like that, um, there's gonna be additional fifty dollars.
Yeah, George costs more to come out.
Well, like, we, for example, we had.
Come through, it's like, well, who gets the hundred dollars, you know?
We had an employee that was, first of all, they were trying to find a employee that could come in. This particular one lived quite a ways away, not, it'd be around Hartford, then he had to come in, turn it on. Well, then the way the policy's written, then you're paying him two hours for callback time. So then, but then he does go and get it turned on, so then in the newer ordinance, we kinda alleviated that, that once you pay or you've been turned off, the city has twenty-four hours, because if you walk in here at three fifty-nine and the guys are done with their shift at three thirty, then if we call them back in at three thirty, then you're getting two more hours.
It seems unreasonable, I mean, don't pay a bill. I mean, it's, I, I think.
We're compassionate, we want, but I wanna be consistent, though, that's the thing, I wanna treat everybody the same.
That's where I think if we, if we had a, once your bill exceeds a certain amount on the twenty fifth, it gets turned off, whether it's seventy-five dollars or whatever.
I don't think you can say send a certain amount because some people use the minimum amount, some people use.
Yeah, but if they incur fees, it's gonna drive the cost up, right? So let's say they're late, they're gonna have the, the fifty dollar fee, or the, the, the ten percent which falls within that threshold. So it just rolls into the next month. As long as they pay their bill the next month, all of it, then it's not, they're not gonna be impacted. But the minute they, they don't pay it on time and then they get the twenty-five dollar fee or, you know, the, the fifty dollar for the multiple offense, hey, if you're having multiple offenses, you got a bigger issue. So now, you know, once we hit fifty dollars, we're gonna go turn the water off.
Could we handle this the way that we're doing with the golf course, our golf cart permit? Because Tara would be the one that has, will be writing that and that you are gonna get with her on what you want on the U T V and the golf cart. Since this is an ordinance that definitely the attorney will have to write, can you possibly give your.
I mean, the accounts are general consensus about what you want, what changes you want.
Cause you're not impacting anything other than when we're gonna go turn it off, so that we can write it in such a way that the services will be disconnected at a specific, that way everybody knows the rules.
Well, everybody knows the rules now, you know, they know.
They do, but in like, the, the example was, you know, he, he was unaware and he paid his bill, and so I'm kinda compassionate that.
Yeah, I'm saying.
Without notification.
Also, this is, was going on, this topic was going on before this council. And at that time, I was asked by a council member to call K U and Kinergy to find out what, what their options were. And I don't even know the one that you know went back there. So I called and asked customer service to find out what they did. And you've got all kinds of different variable answers of what they did. I forgot which one of it was, it didn't matter, if you were a dollar and you wasn't paying, they turned the electricity off. And I forgot which one it was, which service. So if we can find something that we can police, because that's the whole thing, if we can get something, we can be consistent with everyone.
What we've gotten out of that pretty well worked.
Well, if you ask about a dozen people every twenty-fifth of the month.
No, but yeah, the population is okay.
I'm saying we have to keep what we got then, if it worked.
I don't know, this time, I think the number of complainers is, is diminishing because people are, are learning, you know. You know, the, the first timers, I can understand what you're saying, and, you know, we just need to know.
But who are the first timers? Are they the first timers from the beginning of time, or is it first timers from a new ordinance?
No.
Ain't everybody over you or.
Yeah. That's the big problem right there.
From a legal standpoint, because it is a utility, by law, you do not even have to receive your bill and the bill is still due.
Yeah.
That's not true with other types of services, but it is for utilities. And, I mean, and it is, when we take all those bills down there at once, it's impossible for a machine to probably sort those and get those. And so every month, we have a ton of people that really probably did not receive the bill, or like he said, you know, someone else got it. But you, the utility is something you know you're using every single day and thus it is due whether you receive a bill or not. I did not know that before it came to work.
How come the water bills are early this month? I've already received both of mine, I still got three days to go on this month before I get to the first.
They're wanting your money early.
Yeah, yeah.
I got mine yesterday, that.
Pretty much what the tenth of every month.
I got mine today.
Yeah, depends on when they go out and read the meters.
Usually come right about the first of the month, I got both of mine today.
For the most part, we go to the post office on the twenty-sixth of each month.
I'm the first one to get a bill. She dropped it on my desk.
Look how much it's. Most of the city's water bill due.
The city?
Yeah, when do we pay our water bill?
The tenth.
Do we pay it by the tenth every month?
You're talking about the city of Hartford?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The city of Hartford doesn't have.
No.
We don't have a water bill?
If you wanna pay them back to pay for a meter to install it at your city locations, we could, we could keep up with that.
So if you need any water, just come down here.
Just come down here and. That's what I'm saying. Like awesome, like, like the trash can.
Yeah.
Come down here and take a shower. Come down here and wash the car, yeah.
Cause we actually talked about that as far as, uh, water loss being ever calculated.
Keeping up the water laws, here, maintenance garage, fire department, places like that, water plant.
So we, we don't have to pay for the water before we ship it out to folks?
Oh, I thought you meant like our bathroom here at City Hall.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the water that the city uses, that people pay for.
Yeah. We produce it, we produce it, we don't pay anybody, we're the manufacturer.
So we can say whatever price we want on it then.
Yeah. We take, we dip her out of the river, we, we.
Right.
Let me just say this, I pay for those chemicals and for those analysis.
Right.
And they.
Throw it through a strainer and send it.
I thought you meant city hogs.
No, 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 no.
These aren't meters.
Rephrase.
City doesn't buy water.
Right. I guess our expense on, how do we come up with our water bill, basically?
Okay, they just got through doing that, passed, we passed that. Our rates right now are exactly what Ohio County's water is. And you are required, ordered by grant from many years ago, that every October, you will raise your water rates for two percent. And, um, we hadn't had an increase in water rates since two thousand and nine until, was it October, November?
October.
And, but every October, then we were required to go up to two percent.
And that covers the increase in.
That was the requirement in order to get the grant funds at that time.
Before October, we were losing about twenty thousand dollars a month.
Right, I got you.
Okay, and now it's down to roughly four thousand a month of the cost, we're losing.
Which is what the auditor has, has told us for three years, right, that you have no choice, you have to raise water rates. Because, but there again, it is, we don't want the boring stuff, but it is an enterprise thing.
It's all part of the, it's all part of the package.
Yeah.
Even the boring stuff, what you got there.
I was just thinking. I mean, it'd be something for Tara to look at, I mean, if, if on the non-payment, if it was written in a way, and she'd have to do it from a legal standpoint, but paid in full plus all penalties and late fees assessed from prior months by the twenty fifth of the month, that would insinuate.
Before the twenty fifth of the month.
Before the twenty fifth of the month.
Before and by is two different things, okay?
Well, no, this says by the twenty fifth.
Uh, the back of the water bill says.
What's the ordinance say?
Says by.
We gotta go by the ordinance. Back of the water bill is incorrect.
But nevertheless, if, if, if it could be worded in such a way to reference previous months, that means all those late fees that happened between the tenth and the twenty fifth will get tagged to the, the next bill.
So we're just giving them a free ride until the next bill comes out?
No, they have to pay their bill. They have to pay their bill by the twenty fifth or it gets turned off. It's just those late fees, those late fees that are, that happen.
You're giving them a month to pay their late fees, what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as their water bill is completely paid.
Right.
But this is only for first timers.
I don't, I don't know if the system will allow you to do that, that's where I'd ask. I don't wanna create a management nightmare for the city.
That's what you're doing.
Right, so I need to understand what, what.
Okay, you have to understand that all of our water billing is done by computer program, okay? And that report, we can get all different kinds of reports. Uh, like we get reports about meters that are registering zero usage, meters that are actually running backwards, meters that, uh, the, the electronic device is not reading meter, we, we get all kinds of reports like that, so. We get reports, we can get a report about everybody who's delinquent, you know, who's, uh, who hasn't paid by the tenth, we can get a report about the ones who haven't paid before the twenty fifth, you know, so.
You have about five pages usually, at the beginning of, for the twenty fifth, that they're all gonna shut off. And a lot of the time, a lot of the time that the water clerk spends is not in the billing, is not in collecting. It is all of your meters that are reading incorrectly, your E R Ts are reading incorrectly. You're calling because you have a really, really high water bill, but yet your usage was the same. Send someone out to look to see what's going on there and then getting lists together for the guys to go and put in these meters and these E R Ts. And it's that, it's all that managing of the equipment. That's where a lot of the time is spent, and in fact, between the tenth and the twenty fifth, it, there's no one, no one pays. They'll either pay by the tenth or they'll pay on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. So during that time.
But the same price, you pay the twelfth of the.
Exactly.
Twenty-fourth.
Right. And then during that time, now what George has added in to that mix is that she is to call anyone that is not current by the twenty fifth. So she has to look up every account from those five pages, look up the numbers, call those. And, you know, it, how many times do we call?
I'm sorry, I never got one. Been there since two thousand and nine. So that, that worked.
I think I hear your phone ringing right now.
Is there a motion to be made? We don't know.
I think that, I think the motion to be made is to do what Kenny's doing right now, reviewing the ordinance to find out for the next meeting on the recommendations for amendment to.
Does everybody got a copy of the?
But didn't we do that last month? That's why we postponed it from last month, so everybody could review the ordinance to see if anything needed to be changed.
And, and we're talking about the changes, we're just trying to figure out.
But no one came prepared with any changes.
Right, well.
So we put it out for none of them.
To amend the ordinance to, uh, for first time offenders. We'll have to give it to Tara for the, for the wording of it.
And really, that's gonna be a little thing of this one, be the choice of wording that we can use, it would be Tara, and she's not here to.
Right, that's what, yeah.
So we've got, so what I hear is we've got three options. We can look at, is there anything we can do to, to allow the late fees and penalties to roll into the next month? Would be one, one option. The, um, the other one would be to put a dollar amount, once the dollar amount is hit, that we will go out and discontinue the service. Once it's exceeded, would be another option.
How's that gonna work, ma'am, because you've got some people that are using a minimum of two thousand gallons a month or less, and some people that are using six thousand gallons a month. And, I mean, their bill's already gonna be over a certain amount.
I mean, then it gets turned off. Maybe that's not a good option.
Well.
You said something about seventy dollars, mine's seventy-eight dollars just about every month at home.
I like pilots seventy dollars.
Me too, mine's about a hundred and thirty.
Yeah, the, the intent is not to, somebody, they still have to pay their water bill, that's, that's not the intent. The intent is when there's a fee that's assessed because there was a delay in something, whether in that person's control or not, they're still responsible, but it doesn't get discontinued, the service doesn't get discontinued because of the fee. They need to pay that fee the next time.
Yeah, I understand that.
And so whatever that fee is, that fee.
I don't think that's unreasonable.
Yeah, would be the limit, hey, maybe if the fee's twenty-five dollars.
It should be fifty and a hundred.
Well, I would say multiple offenders don't go over a hundred, don't go to the hundred, you know, put the cap at fifty.
First time offender is fifty.
Yeah.
Thereafter is a hundred or three year look back, and, and if you look at a three A, three A, it talks about the first offense.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a three year look back, so for your first time, it's fifty dollars.
Yeah, so it'd be fifty-one dollars. We would set the limit that we will go turn off service at fifty-one dollars. That way, the first offense, that's one way to.
So you're saying automatically, a first offender never has their water turned off, the fee's automatically added to the next bill?
That's correct, yep. That's what I'm.
And then at fifty-one dollars, we're gonna roll somebody out and turn the service off if it's multiple offenders?
It won't be fifty-one, it'd be fifty or a hundred.
Yeah, well, the next time it's a hundred, so this has already happened more than once, we've already educated you on your options in order to get your bill paid on time. Cause when they have to pay the fifty dollar fine, they're gonna start asking questions, they're gonna be like, hey, why is, where did this fine come from on my bill?
Yeah.
They'll be in here the next month, I guarantee that.
So then the next month, they get a bill and it's got this extra charge of fifty dollars on there, and they come up and ask, well, what's that for?
Yeah, and then we say, hey, look, we received your payment here, it was late, these are some options you may wanna consider, you wanna set this, this program's great that we have.
But we didn't turn your water off this time.
That's bad.
That's what.
I, I, I think I would just, I mean.
So the motion would be, I recommend that we.
I mean, Tara's gonna have to find the, the choice of wording to try to achieve what you are asking.
Right, I understand the gist, it's gonna have to be put in Tara's jargon.
Right, and I don't know anyone, I know, I don't know how to word that, where that would be.
Okay, so we'll have to table for the next one.
And then the other thing is to see how the software, the software will do it.
Correct.
Manage it, or, or if she has to manage it outside.
She's gonna have a turn off list for fifty dollars.
Well, yeah, but you've seen that turn off list.
Yeah.
It doesn't say fifty dollars, it doesn't say a hundred dollars, she's already, she has to manually go back and look at every one of those on that list to find out, okay, this first time, she marks those green, I think it is, and they're fifty dollars. And, and the others, she's gotta look and she's also has to look at that customer at the same time, though, back three years to see, okay, have they had anything in three years?
But she does that anyway, right? She's already doing that.
She is doing that, correct?
Correct, so she's already doing that. The only, the only change would be not sending the water folks out to turn the water off. The fee's still implemented on the next bill.
And then you, but the fee's not paid by the twenty fifth, then it's rolled over to the following month, is what you're saying?
Yeah, as long as they paid their water bill by the twenty fifth.
As long as they.
If they didn't pay their water bill, then they got the water bill and the fee and it's, it's time to turn it off, just like normal. If they didn't pay their water bill, then they got the water bill and the fee and it's, it's time to turn it off, just like normal.
Wait a minute now, what'd you just say?
So-
Just like normal.
If, if, if they don't pay their water bill-
Yeah.
And then, then they get the fee for being late. The, the service still gets turned off because-
The fifty dollar?
Yeah, they get the fifty-dollar fee. They have the water bill that's thirty, forty bucks minimum, whatever it is, or my-
Sixty, sixty-three dollars.
Okay, so sixty-three, well, that's a hundred and ten dollars. It's time to go turn the water off.
That's what we're doing now.
Yeah.
No, we're not. We're turn, we're, if they pay their water, the twenty-five dollar fee, we're turning them off for twenty-five dollars.
No, there's no twenty-
I'm sorry, the fifty-dollar fee. We're turning them off when there's a fifty-dollar balance left on their account.
No, no.
That's what the gentleman said.
No.
That was here.
He didn't pay, he didn't pay the, oh, okay, I know what you're saying, that there is a-
Turn off.
A penalty that they're not paying after the tenth.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah.
So they pay the, they pay what their initial bill is that they would have paid if they paid before the tenth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they're paying afterwards, they're, they're paying the initial bill and they're not paying the penalty fee, the penalty, the ten percent penalty.
Yep, the ten percent.
Okay. So then, when it comes up to the twenty-fifth, we're still letting them, we're charging them the fifty-dollar penalty, but we're also charging them for the, the ten percent penalty too.
We do that now.
Putting both on the same bill, on the next bill.
So just an app line for you. Here is her cutoff for short balances for February. It is a total of a hundred and seventy-one counts. The delinquent amount is eighteen thousand and fifty-two dollars. These would be the ones that George is asking her to call. Um, and then it has the delinquent amount, some are five dollars, uh, a hundred and ninety-four dollars. Uh, but this is actually what the ones that you're talking about. So each, anybody that's on here right now, she would have to look up to see have they had their water turned off in the last three years?
Right.
For all one hundred and seventy-one. Then if they have not, then she's gonna charge, she would put the fifty-dollar fee. And if they have, then she's gonna put a hundred-dollar fee.
Right.
For a hundred and seventy-one counts. And then-
Now, on that, has she already distinguished first time and second time? Has she already-
Well, she has to go through-
Chester's gonna figure that out.
But, so that's what she's doing presently. She's doing that.
And calling the people. And like I said, and some of these are, and this is where George is saying, you know, well, is it three dollars? What is it? Like, five dollars and eighteen cents. But then you have one I just saw here was three hundred and something dollars. And, and here's the other thing also please do consider that I did not know until I started working here. Uh, for example, here's one hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Okay, so your average American, you know, is two checks away from being broke. That's-
Sure.
Everybody knows that. Next month, if the bill's a hundred and eighty-two dollars, do you know how hard it is going to be to pay that amount? So the one thing that we have found is by making them pay instead current, they were able to pay. It is a huge disservice for a majority of people to let dollars roll. Now, I know you're talking about smaller dollars, but just remember, it's not always a benefit. It is also a curse. And I remember another water clerk we sat here, it was, it was like, we're just doing a huge disservice to our citizens by letting it roll because then you're making, it's bigger than your house payment. So, I'm, I'm, I'm in a poor, again, so I just want you to understand the process. There's a hundred and seventy-one people that are delinquent.
And they're delinquent every month?
Lot of them are, a lot of them are, so repeat that.
And so how many aren't delinquent?
Well, these are, these are all, you have eleven hundred-
Eleven hundred customers.
Eleven hundred customers.
So-
Yeah, but here's the thing, this eighteen thousand that's delinquent, they're just twenty thousand dollars short in revenue they have. That I did pay the bill for the chemicals and all the other things.
Sure.
I mean, there's-
I, I, and I, and I get that.
And I know, there's human desires, I understand that too. I don't mean to be compounding, I just know. What I, what I would want is just something that we could actually police and be fair.
Right.
That is, that, that's the key.
And that's our job to figure out how to do that. Regardless of how difficult it may be. If it, if it serves both us and them, them being us because we're citizens.
See, I'm, they just got left voicemail.
What we're here for.
Left voicemail. Left message, no voicemail. No number.
Well, most of them probably got caller ID and so they sit the city of Hartford, they don't answer it.
I'm just thinking about the other thousand people that, uh, are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And for their first time, non-malicious beef, that their service not to be cut that time. Still do the fine, still do all of that other things. What the turning off the water does do, it gets an immediate response. It does do that, but so does holding a gun.
Well, sometimes, we've had one-
Well, you got mine.
We had one lady that went without water for about, what, five months or six months, something like that.
That's not necessarily true.
Right.
Those that are repeat offenders will go two and three months. It's very normal to not have the water turned off.
Sure, and that's-
Those are the folks who can afford to.
Right, and so they go without water.
They do go without water. But if you give them water and they're not paying for it-
But, but folks, but the other thousand folks are gonna promptly come down and take care of their, and then they're gonna complain about the water being served when they've never missed one. There has to be something to accommodate those thousand people, that they're not penalized for the hundred or less. And we have to figure that out.
Another option might be, I mean, we're not unique. We're a municipality.
Sure.
Another option might be to check with other local municipalities that have an average population that we do and see what theirs are. Now, we've already done that. We've done that, I think Wadini was here, but we could do that again. Because, I mean, if it's working for Beaver Down, if it's working for Island, if it's working for Litchfield, I mean, I don't know, that would be another. I mean, maybe they've already created that will when it works.
Right.
I don't know. But, I mean, we're not unique. We're no different than any others possibly.
Okay, you wanna make a motion or you want to type later?
Trying to think of the words for that motion.
Pardon?
I'm trying to think of the phrasing for what we need to do for that motion. I, I don't think this needs to be done right here. I think we, we're on to something. I think we're really close. Uh, and so we, what we need Tara, obviously, for the, uh, legal verbiage. And you guys, you know, obviously discuss how this would, could impact your workforce. All that needs to be done. We, we said last month that we would talk about it and we're, and we've talked about it. I, I don't think we're done talking about it, but I think we've made advances towards it.
Let me ask you this. So that if we are discussing this, I can get all three of those options, cause I would like to run this through our software. The options, one was for late fees to be rolled over.
You, you said something, oh, first, just the first offense trigger.
Yeah, first offense trigger would, would not lose their service, still impose the penalty.
Was the verbiage around the rollover of the, the fee into the next month, yeah, so-
Okay.
Yeah.
Got that? What was your third one? I thought you said there were three.
A doll, no, there was a dollar amount and then there was the verbiage in allowing the fee to roll to next month. So like when the late fee gets initiated in the software, does it show, how does it show up? Does it show late fee current or would it show late fee?
No, she just-
By the month that you're in?
Late fees are put on manually.
Oh.
For every kind of-
She had to go back and look at the history and-
She has to look at the-
So she'd have to say, hey, late fee February. Really, in the system, say late fee February is in the name.
She'd almost have to look at them individually, at their history, their claim of history.
Right.
But I thought you had three.
There was the, yeah, there was allowing the late fee to roll in to the next month.
Got that?
Then, then there, there was a fifty-one dollar amount as a trigger point to say, hey, go turn the water off. And then the third one was the first offense.
The third one's what?
Right.
The first offender.
First offender, they still get, they, they still incur the fees as ordinance is written.
It's the same thing as the fifty-one dollar amount.
Right, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it does, it does the same purpose, but they don't lose their service.
If you get your water cut off, you gotta pay fifty-one dollars.
No, you, you still pay the normal fees that are listed.
It'd be-
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred dollars.
It would be-
Yeah, fifty and a hundred.
Yeah, the only, the only, the only thing different is, is the first offender doesn't lose service. They still incur-
All the fees.
All the fees.
But if it rolled into the second one, they had to pay-
But if it rolled into the second one, then they're a second offender.
Yeah.
Okay, and then if they had it, they, they know now that they got a break by not getting their water service cut off. They still have to pay the penalty.
And the fifty-one is, is what?
That was a trigger number.
It's just one dollar.
Fifty-one may not be a good-
Fifty-one dollars is a trigger number?
It's not a good number.
For the bill?
The hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Be a hundred dollars, cause then we're only dealing fifties and hundreds.
Right.
What is, what's fifty-four?
The, the dollar amount is based off of when you're gonna go out and disconnect service.
So he's saying that a hundred dollars, you're gonna go out and disconnect?
Delinquent.
When the bill becomes a hundred dollars? Huh?
No.
I think when it comes to the second month.
You got me confused now.
Yeah, I think there's-
Yeah, not the dollar amount is when it comes to the second month and you hadn't, hadn't paid the fine.
Previous month?
Yeah.
Okay, and it costs fifty dollars for that?
No, it's already cost you fifty, goes in the second, it costs you a hundred and fifty, right?
Hundred, so you'd have a total of a hundred and fifty then.
To cut it off and, and install it, yeah.
Fees, yeah.
And when do you do that?
The second one.
Same schedule.
The second month after we've already rolled over a lot.
First month you've already told them.
Okay.
We're not turning it off here.
Yeah, we're going-
You still have to pay fifty and you've had to pay your, your, uh, the penalty, the ten percent penalty.
Sure, you're late, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, they're not, they're not getting out of-
Something goes back to the second one then.
They're not getting out of the penalty. But because they are, you know, you don't have to worry about this group of people.
So if you go back to the second one, you've got-
Yeah.
We got to do something.
You got a penalty, fifty dollars penalty, a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So a hundred and fifty plus two penalties.
If we roll over the third one.
I'm on board with that.
They'll never get to the third one.
It got my attention, that's one thing it did do.
Huh?
Then when they get their bill on, at the beginning of the month, they're gonna see a fifty-dollar late fee and they're gonna walk into the office and they're gonna be like, what's this? Why do I have a fifty-dollar late fee on top of my bill?
And sure enough, I went over to Mr. Boggs and he was-
Cause we've let him go a month, right? Cause we've let him go a month without notifying.
No, they tried to notify the person. They've tried to call.
So it wouldn't-
They don't have a number, they can't call. That's the problem when people don't give you the right numbers or won't give you a phone number. You heard Tara say she wouldn't give hers out.
Nine years ago.
Yeah. I've been trying to get rid of Bianca's call for about six years.
Change phones every month.
So basically, we make a motion to review, to change the ordinance, to amend the first offender consequences. And what, and that review would be, have to go through you and Tara. Because basically we've narrowed that whole discussion down to one tiny little area on the ordinance.
Since he has three options and it's gonna come down to some legal jargon, basically, of how she can write it.
Yep.
And then you would have to decide when she writes it, which option that you would want, or maybe if or options.
Sure.
I still don't see this as any different than the golf cart and the utility, cause you're gonna have to get with her to give her the options. And then she's gonna have to look up from a utility standpoint legally, what we can do.
Sure.
So I'm not, I'm not saying not do anything. I'm just saying-
Right.
We need to table this for-
Tara is got to be the one that's gonna look up the laws to see what we can do, what KRS says, and then from there-
Well, that, then that would be the motion.
We can give her options.
Yep.
We will.
You're still moving forward.
Right, we will get with Tara. We'll get with Tara.
I mean, when you make a motion that you're gonna wanna change it, that really, that's useless, that does not-
Well, I'm trying to facilitate the, the manner of the motion. I'm like, I don't know, I'll have to-
Try to get some more, okay, you get, you're up and-
Yeah, what, whatever does that.
It's all right, you can take as long as you want. I've already won the bet.
But now, if we can give those ideas to her, she could actually have a first ordinance ready by the next meeting. And then as long as nothing major changes between your first reading and your second reading, you could even tweak something a little bit.
Sure.
And you're still, I think, trying to simply move this topic along. And then you can vote on that ordinance, see if it works or if it doesn't.
Let's do that.
Okay.
What are you doing?
All against it. You don't even know what we're doing. Go back to sleep.
Cause normally in a situation like this, Tara will sit there and she'll be writing something out. When she hears your ideas of how that she can write it, she's just not here to offer herself.
So you can give her those three options and ask her how she can work it.
I would prefer Kenny to send the, to the bill.
All right.
I have not understood the-
Next item.
All right, now what have we, what have we done?
We're gonna start all over. This didn't go well.
We'll talk to Tara and, and tell her what I think I've, I've heard here and try to see how she feels about rewriting the ordinance to have to incorporate what's been suggested here. And, but then she'll come back with, uh, proposed ordinance and y'all can see if you like it or not.
So we're not voting on whether to change the ordinance or anything like that?
Not right now. Because we don't have the-
We'll get a sample ordinance.
Legal mumbo jumbo to make that motion until we've talked to Tara. When she puts it in a coherent-
That's not my point. That's, that's okay. That's not my point, that's okay.
Our points have not-
Point is whether or not all of us agreed to change the ordinance.
Right.
We don't know what the ordinance is yet. We know what the, what we're-
Whether we want to change the existing ordinance then.
Right.
That's, uh, that's what I thought we were going to vote on, is whether we want to change this ordinance and as a-
And what are we gonna change it to?
Let me finish. As a result of that, George is gonna talk to Tara if, if the, if everyone agrees to go with it. George is gonna talk to Tara and get her to draw up that ordinance.
That's what I said.
Now, it's not what you said, but that's okay.
Not, not been what you heard.
No, you didn't. You don't want to vote to see if everyone around this table agrees with you to even change it.
What she's saying is, is there a motion to change the ordinance as it now stands? Is there a motion to change the ordinance at all?
Well, then, yes.
She could make that motion.
Huh?
She could make that motion. We could vote on it.
Who?
Any member.
Yeah, I'm waiting. Somebody wants to make that motion.
You guys know my opinion. Like, I'm here to, I, you know, I think we should consider it, but if, you know, you could say, you could make your motion, you could kill it right now.
That's what we're trying-
If you get enough votes.
What we're trying to determine is-
So we are going back to the motion.
Is there a consensus that we want to change the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
My vote is yes.
Well-
I made the motion. I've been trying to make a motion for fifteen minutes.
Okay, you make some motion that we consider changing the ordinance, all right?
I was second, man.
All right, second. Now, we've discussed the heck out of it. The motion is that we consider changing the ordinance. How it's changed, that's something else.
Right.
We're just talking about changing ordinance, all right? If you're in favor of changing the ordinance, the uplifted hand.
You were second.
Okay.
Wait, 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 wait. Okay. Got it.
And if you're not in favor, the uplifted hand, okay. So, toward two, we will talk to Tara about possible changes that I've heard discussed and let her come up with a sample ordinance, uh, for consideration. All right, next item of business there on your agenda is the downtown sidewalk change order. Uh, and doing the work that they're doing on the sidewalks, of course, I told you about running into the, Uh, and doing the work that they're doing on the sidewalks, of course, I told you about running into the, the room underneath the sidewalk in front of Capers. Uh, they found the other places where there were little small situations like that one, but that's the main one. That, uh, you got the change order? That order was about, uh, fifty-eight hundred dollars to, to change and make that sturdy enough where they could put concrete there. They were gonna put some corrugated metal over a steel frame, and then they would be able to pour concrete on it. They also had to add a entrance down at, uh, Brandon Thompson's, uh, there was no entrance, there was a curb there, so they had to add an entranceway for access for, uh, the area beside his building. And then, uh, they changed the work order where we have the oh, where we had the flower boxes, they were gonna take those flower boxes out and just put a dirt strip down through there and grass it. And, uh, I didn't think that was very good. The engineer didn't think it was a good idea. The original plan called for certain flower boxes and lamp posts and things like that. Uh, that was just gonna be a, a grassy strip that would have to be mowed and would dry up and it basically just become a dirt strip, is what it would basically be. So the, the original plans called for the, the flower boxes with, uh, brick pavers in between and, and lamp posts in between, so anyway, the change from dirt to having this concrete under base was an additional thirty-two hundred dollars. Anyway, the total change order came to an additional two, ten thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. Uh, according to the auditor, I can't make that change order decision. It has to be a council decision. So I'm just asking you to approve the change order so that, uh, the work can go along, uh, that you're gonna do. So I need a motion to accept
Make the motion.
All right, so second. Any discussion to it?
I'll second, but what was holding
He seconded.
Uh, what was holding up the concrete in the first place?
Well, oh
It was in front of Capers.
That's a good question. I don't know if there was anything holding up it. Uh, there was no, I didn't see the hole, okay? But the way I understand it, there was no support for it. It was just a concrete slab that never was enough weight on it to break it.
There at the parking lot entrance, there was a hole there too.
Yeah.
That was big, and it, it had some old grater blade
There was an eye beam, there was an eye beam in it. There was an eye beam across the entrance too, up there at the edge of the sidewalk.
Yeah. Well, on the other side of the sidewalk where the lot was, when the Citizens Bank, they just gravelled it, and it kept sinking down, and people were dragging mufflers off going over it, 'cause it sunk so much. And they put a chain up.
So this change order was for
Well
That work?
It, it was things that have popped up that weren't in the initial plans. Uh, you know, that's like the hole in front of Capers, the need for the entrance, access entrance for the other side of Brandon's property, and then the change from, they were backing off and trying to make a cheaper contract by just putting dirt in instead of what the original plans called for, which is much more uh, less maintenance, more beneficial to the city, I think, as far as looks or anything, so I mean, that was just another three, thirty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred dollars, so. All right, any more discussion?
Are they still doing the brick
Paving?
Plank, planker boxes?
Uh, yeah. The, the planter boxes will be about two and a half feet deep, four feet wide, eleven feet long. And they'll have, uh, a small tree in the middle, then they'll have shrubs around that, and then perennials, and then on the outside will be just ground cover. More discussion? All in favor of the motion, change order? Thank you. Uh, motion carried. Okay, that looks like the end of the program, but it's not. Uh, we had advertised for cemetery mowing again. We don't even have change orders on there. Uh, today was the deadline for the mowing contract, uh, bids. Uh, we received two bids. Uh, one bid was for, and the mowing starts April the first and will continue through October the thirty-first. Roughly thirty-one weeks. Uh, one bid ended up being twenty-two hundred dollars a week, which that would total up to sixty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. The other bid was the same fellow who did it last year, and his bid this year came in a little higher, but it was forty thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, two years ago, when we took a look at the cost for maintaining the cemetery ourselves, um, accounting labor, uh, maintenance, fuel, everything that we could look at, uh, it cost us about forty-four thousand dollars a year to maintain the cemetery at that time. Uh, last year, he did it for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred, and this year, he's gone up to forty thousand, three hundred. It's an increase of less than two thousand dollars, less than three thousand dollars, but it means mowing the cemetery once every week, and then weed eating half of it one week, and weed eating the other half the next week, and so I got a lot of positive comments about him last year, so I'm gonna recommend that we accept the bid of, uh, Law &amp; Order, which is, uh, just Jordan Over Street at the rate of forty thousand, three hundred dollars this year. It's a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Part.
I'll make a motion, accept the bid.
Okay, second.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Which one?
Uh, I heard, heard and saw, and all right, three discussion regarding the motion. If not, then all in favor, or significantly uplifted hand. Thank you. Motion's carried. Um, the fire department has an air conditioner that's gone bad and, um, needs to be repaired. I think, uh, Four Star is the one who's installed the air conditioner. And they came in with a bid today, or an offer, uh, what was it? Twelve hundred and twenty-five dollars. Do we have that?
Five hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Yeah, and it's, let me see if I have it here in office. I wanna have it.
How, how old was that fire department then, did it? Not sure, no.
Seven or eight years old, maybe ten.
Typically.
Twelve hundred's not very much for an air conditioner for some, like, is it?
This is repairing it.
That's probably repair, oh.
They'd be still under warranty.
But that's what we're
Parts of it.
And when was that?
Would that still be under warranty, George? No?
No, seven or eight.
Um, it's a, here it is right here. Okay. Uh, there's a, a four-ton evaporator coil, and then, uh, the refrigerant to go in it. Uh, they, and then the labor to do the work. It ends up being twelve hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, anyway, I'll pass this around, and y'all can take a look at it, um.
I can see your cash balance.
Thank you.
Do what now? Up for that, that big, uh, unit, I don't think it's
Four ton?
We haven't, haven't checked with anybody else, but, um, I think he was the installer, and so it's his, you know, his type of equipment he works on. I guess they all could repair it. Um, there's two units in the fire department. Uh, they're both in closets, one at, at opposite ends, and uh, this one's developed some problems. I just don't know much about air conditioning, to tell you. While y'all are looking at that, uh,
Do what?
I was unable to find where, where that's coming from, the funding.
Oh.
If you would do cash balance.
Okay.
Can you do that? Is it DVD?
Hmm. Let's see, I'm trying to think what else I could tell you about.
I don't know if it's on your list.
Hmm?
Is it on your list?
Hmm.
How about the water tank, do you hear any more on that?
Well, that's what she's got right here. Um, last time you asked for bids, and I have been in contact with, uh, the engineer, city engineer of Danville. He's a professional engineer. Uh, of course, he's the city's engineer, so that's where his primary pay comes from. He does this other on the side. Just a project every now and then. Center Town's the one that told me about him. He, he did their water tank, and, uh, so I called him and talked with him. He said, uh, that he could do the project. He said that what we talked about, you know, putting a floor in the water tank, cutting the capacity down to four hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Uh, the floor, of course, will be supported underneath. By putting a floor in, that would always allow us to be able to go in, if we needed the main gallon tank again, we could always go in and just cut that out and be back to making gallons again. But, uh, he sent us a contract, and what he has proposed is, uh, much cheaper than what the rates would be if we went through a engineering firm, because this is not his primary source of income. But he could do the, uh, surveying the tank, uh, as Reifway says right here, coordinate the geotactical engineering for the proposed construction. Prepare the preliminary engineering report. The preliminary engineering report, engineering report is what we would take to grad to present to the Water Management Council. If they approved it, then we could apply then for a grant, uh, it'd be probably a fifty-fifty grant. And, uh, that would be enough to fund what he estimates the project to be. But he would do all of that. Per, the preliminary engineering report would be the main thing there, uh, for eighty-eight hundred dollars. And then he would develop contract documents for the construction of the tank, and he would assist in the Kentucky Division of Water Construction Approval for the tank. And follow through, you know, on all that process to get our, to get our grant, and that would be eleven thousand, five hundred dollars. So we're looking at, uh, twenty thousand, three hundred dollars to do all of it, ready for construction. And probably if we got an engineering firm to do it, it'd be more than a thirty thousand dollar range, uh, about ten percent of what he estimates the project to be. Estimates the project to be about a three hundred thousand dollar project. Uh, what that will still do for us, since we use about three hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, if we maintain the four hundred and fifty thousand there, and then, of course, in our elevated tank on Frederick Street, we got another hundred and twenty-five thousand there. It would give us enough capacity to be able to sell water should that opportunity ever arose again. But it would still cut down on the amount of problems that we have with turnover, because if we put in three hundred and fifty thousand gallons and use the three hundred and fifty thousand gallons, that's only leaving a hundred thousand gallons in there, and we have less problems than if we had the six hundred and fifty thousand gallons, uh, leftover stuff in there. Anyway, um, I'd like to enter into a contract with him to go ahead and proceed with, uh, the design and, uh, prepare the preliminary engineering report. If we decide to do this, it would go to, before then, before the Water Management Council in June, and, uh, then we would proceed to, uh, try to get the fun, necessary funding. It would be a fifty-fifty match, so the ci- the city would be out roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a small enough amount that I'm thinking maybe three, four-year, five-year loan, or something like that, instead of issuing any bonds or anything like that. So what I'd like for, uh, for you to discuss is whether or not you want to do this or not, enter into that contract with this engineer, and let him proceed with design and, and follow up right to the point of construction for about twenty thousand, three hundred dollars. Is there
I think we should, uh, do that, 'cause we're wasting a lot of water each month.
Lot of chemicals too.
Yeah.
Yeah, make the motion, go ahead and go with it.
Well, he's, you made the motion.
Yeah, I make the motion when we go
Yeah, and you make second, okay. Now, any kind of discussion? What questions or discussions do you have about it? I don't care if I do another project during my term of office, but this is one that I see that Hartford definitely needs. It's a, it's what the operators tell us would be a solution to a lot of our issues with disinfectant byproducts and the chlorine problem, and um, this is one that, uh, this, I feel it's gonna save us some money, you know, but they're working down there constantly. They're trying new chemicals. Uh, right now, that's cheaper, but just as effective as what, uh, what the older chemicals were doing. So we're constantly trying to cut down on our cost, but this is a big issue on, on the quality of our water and
What's a completion contract? How long would it take to finish, something like that?
Of course, we'd, it would be very short, because we would be without the use of the tank, you know, we'd have to just operate out of the small elevated tank on Frederick. Uh, so it's just a matter of, once it's dry enough in there, then they'll go in and start putting in the supports and putting the floor in, and once they get that in, it's done, so.
The timing will be
Pardon?
The timing will not be repairing it, the timing will be getting the funding. You agree?
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause, uh- Yeah, 'cause, uh, we'll apply, but we probably won't have, uh, any confirmation of, of a grant if we don't get in the, the cycle for this year, we have to wait till next year to do it. They only, when you get money from KI, CDVG, uh, all these other funding sources, they take the grants or the request, the project request, and they rack them and they say, okay, this is what we can fund this year. And so, if yours doesn't get selected, then you have to wait till next year, the next cycle, and that's probably what would slow this down, this thing may not be completed or even attempted till next year.
We had to first get our audit.
Pardon?
We had to first get our audit, so we'll close out the first one.
Yeah. Yeah, we can apply, we can apply for a grant till, till the, um, the project we did this past summer, uh, till that's completed. It's completed, but all the pipe work's not done, so we can't apply till all that gets taken care of. Any more questions or discussion? If you're in favor of that, would you uplift your hand? Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay.
We're going to go back to Four Star, we just kinda skipped it.
Well, okay, what job aside you want to do about Four Star? Fixing the air conditioner?
It's gotta be fixed, it's gotta be fixed.
It's gotta be fixed, good.
Funding.
Okay. Uh, first, first, can we get the funding?
Their dues start coming in.
We've been putting on water.
Uh, fire department funds only got, what is it, thirty-four hundred?
Thirty-four hundred dollars.
Yeah, and it, uh, of course, I mean-
When did their dues start coming in? First of the year?
A fine-
July?
There'll be a few people that, we'll get them out before that, there'll be a few people that'll pay early.
But we got enough money in there right now to go ahead and pay it, you know, it's just a matter of building, build back up once the dues start coming back in. But it's, I mean, all that money's in general fund anyway, so.
I'd say go ahead and take it and-
Fire department is not a proprietary fund, they don't, they don't make enough money to take care of themselves. All right.
We got a motion.
Yeah, um, is there a motion to go ahead and do this? Okay, Tony David second. Any discussion? Funding coming out of fire department fund? Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Uh, don't have anything else except an announcement? Anybody have anything you want to bring up?
They, uh, probably about the city police, that they need another officer.
They need another officer?
Yes, sir. Said that they, uh, really shorthanded right now and stuff, they need another officer. I don't know if they're just-
How many officers do they have?
Five.
Five.
Kenny Leroy or?
Yeah, they, uh, they've had five officers for the last two years. They haven't, uh, James, I believe, is part-time. Did he go full-time? I know he started off part-time. Case in point, they're all, they got one officer sick, so they're, they're all working overtime, six, six and seven days a week. I'm just regurgitating, uh-
They told me twelve hours.
I haven't, I haven't looked at their schedule, I'm just trying to-
I know, my neighbor had someone try to break in his house and he called him and never got it answered and didn't get a call back. So, must be real busy.
I don't know. I mean, I mean, dispatches are there.
That's definitely something you heard about, on, on board on budget.
Yeah. Yeah, um-
Do we need to talk to Leroy? I mean, if that's the word on the street from other officers, do we need to talk to Leroy? He's the police chief. And, uh-
Well, we, we don't have it in our budget right now, it would have to be after the first of July.
Right.
Before we can hire somebody else right now, unless we made a major adjustment in our budget.
Because there's certified officers that he could put in there if he had one, otherwise, there's the academy, of course, that they have to, after ten, before they can go on the street.
Yeah. Uh, I'll make a suggestion that we just table this till next month, all right?
That's good.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else?
Nobody has anything to say to me, then?
Go ahead.
If not, I'm out of here.
Oh, well-
Oh, thanks for saving my life, just happening with that wash. You look like an operator wash.
Well, we need to, uh, take a look at the financial reports, we skipped over that. Uh, have any, anybody have any questions about, uh, any of the financials, bank balance statements, which we don't have? Anybody run across anything that, uh, you wanted to ask about or? If there aren't any, then I entertain a motion to accept the financials. Second, okay. All in favor? Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, second over here, all in favor? All right, thank you. Let me announce to you, we have our public hearing, um, April twenty-fifth, which is right before our next council meeting. It'll be at four-thirty. And it's for the, our MRA and LDEA, which are funds that we use to do our street paving, things like that. We use the money for other things, but it's all involved with the streets and maintenance of the streets and, and other things, so that hearing's four-thirty on the twenty-fifth, right here, all right? We have to do it in order to qualify for the MRA and LDEA fund, all right?